Okay, welcome everybody to the third hearing of the committee's inquiry into PFAS contamination in waterways and drinking water supplies throughout New South Wales. I acknowledge the Awabakal people, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we're meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Kate Fairman and I am Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. So, welcome to our first witnesses and thanks for making the time to give evidence. Could each of you, starting with you, Mr Roomes, please state your name and position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation?
By me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much. And Dr Walton? Do the witnesses need to press there before they speak? Is that the situation?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great.
Dr Michael Trevor Walton, affirmation, I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much. Now, do either or both of you have a short opening statement to make?
Yes.
Great.
Good morning, everybody. I've been studying the effects of PFAS and PAFOa and specifically how PFAS travels through the environment. I'm concerned with recent levels of PFAS and PAFOa located at the Pacific Dunes Golf Course in Medawi and its spread outside the so-called red zone. I'm also aware of a similar reading that was recorded at the Salt Ash Weapons Range. In my opinion, this raises concerns regarding the management of PFAS in specific areas: the spread of PFAS, the containment of PFAS, the remediation and eventual deposition of contaminated waste to Newcastle EPA landfill sites. I would also suggest we have fallen significantly behind international best practice in the management of PFAS and PAFOa.
Thank you, Paula. No, just add very quickly that the level of forever chemicals found in Pacific Dunes with our test result appears to be in much higher, greater quantity than simply being explained by leaching beyond the so-called red zone. Detected levels raise questions whether contaminated material has been deposited from elsewhere and/or raw PFAS and PAFOa has been diluted into a water course which is an interconnected body. I note that one of the submissions' reports alleged that PFAS containers were used in aquaculture and for which there allegedly was no reasonable response from relevant agents.
Okay, thank you both. Now, I'll just ask your circumstance to begin with, to give the committee a bit of history in terms of why you're here. So, we hear from government that the groundwater is contained as much as possible within the area of Williamtown and that two bores, as I understand, have been closed as a result. Now, you're here saying, just to be clear, to explain it to the committee in detail, that... Are you saying that the contamination has spread to particular drains? You provided a good submission with lots of photos. Would one of you care to explain what you're saying in terms of those drains near your property and what you believe is happening with PFAS?
Yes, sir. I was working on restoring a stone coin and I noticed bubbles and hitting up against the wall where I was working on. And at first, I just thought it was a child with one of those blowing bubble machines.
When was this, Mr Roomes? When was this? Sorry, just...
That would have been back in winter last year.
In June. I think we sent you an email advising it on the 29th and we'd need to check the photos, the time and date of the photos, but I think it was on the Friday before then, but a couple of days beforehand.
And then, as it kept occurring, I thought, this is strange. And then I discovered a drain, a water course, where the foam was very evident and there was quite a large volume of water going down that causeway and drain. And it just seemed unusual because it wasn't raining. So, I decided to try and track where this was coming from. And I estimate about 100 metres away, I uncovered a pump with a body of water which still had the similar amounts of foam on top of that body of water. So, it was very clear to me that this body of water was being pumped, for whatever reason, into other water courses that were throughout Pacific Dunes.
And so, when you saw that water with all the foam, and I think from your experience, you recognised that the presence of foam can be an indication of PFAS?
Correct.
What did you... Did you call authorities? Did you try and report it?
No. Initially, what I did was I went to get a sample. So, I obtained an approved container and obtained that sample. And in doing so, I saw Golf Course Management also looking at that foam. I tried to draw the attention of that management, but they, for whatever reason, chose not to engage me. And so, then I just basically went home with the sample and discussed it with Michael. I did not report it to any authorities. And my experience with Newcastle EPA has been... Well, I basically have absolutely no faith in their jurisdiction or interest in environmental damage, and Mr Walton might highlight on that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it's common knowledge that the red zone, or so-called red zone, common knowledge amongst residents...
Do you live in that red zone, sorry, just to...
No. We're in Pacific Dunes, which is very close to Williamtown Air Force and the airport.
Yes.
But it was always surprising, it was never in the red zone. But it's common knowledge amongst locals that PFAS is beyond the red zone and has been for a considerable period. So, we had no faith in Newcastle EPA. And we have been here before with Newcastle EPA in relation to dumping of illegal material, asbestos, building material at our previous property, for which the material wasn't monitored as to where it went, and we had enormous problems in relation to that.
And this went on for at least five years, trying to get it resolved.
Yeah, it went on for a long time. It wasn't ever fully resolved. So, we had no faith in calling Newcastle EPA or an authority. And we didn't know that it was PFAS. We thought by the frothing and the agitation of the water that it could be. Paul got some on his hands, as I said in the submission, and it stung. But we were surprised as anyone by the level of...
Contamination.
By the level of contamination.
I'll go to the government in one second with a question. But I just... So, your dealings with government agencies has not been satisfactory to your regard? We did invite Department of Defence, they are a Commonwealth agency, so they don't have to appear, but they did decline to appear. Your view generally, your experience with government agencies?
Well, whenever I've addressed concerns with Hunter Water, they've always minimised it and basically said, there's no problem, there's no significant readings. And I have spoken to numerous residents who have suggested that Hunter Water are regularly monitoring the PFAS on their properties. So, to suggest that there's no significant levels was just not, to me, not an accurate description of the area or what was occurring. If they're regularly testing bores outside the red zone, they're doing it for a reason. And they're telling residents not to use that water, yet they're not... I've suggested many a times that they should be a lot more transparent for the residents around the region, because people really have a right to know that if they are living in a polluted environment, they should have the right to either A, get out of it, or B, able to address the concerns about getting it remediated. And I've always found it extremely frustrating on that basis. And it sort of all stemmed back to the 90s as well, when the Salt Ash Weapons Range was used for bombing, and then if there were subsequent fires, there were put out with PFAS foam. Now, this is in a drinking water catchment area, and it just didn't pass the pub test to me. It didn't make any sense that why would you drop bombs on a place that relies on bore water? And everyone just thought that was perfectly acceptable practice.
Thank you.
Never stuck with me.
Mr Murphy, did you have questions?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Chair. I just had some questions. Thank you for your submissions. I read both of those. And I just wanted to sort of ask a few questions to clarify my understanding of the concerns that you have. So, you're living in Pacific Dunes, that's right?
That's correct.
And that's not in the red zone? So, that's not designated as an affected area? Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah. But you're concerned really is, you're worried about it, you think it should be tested by government because it possibly could be an affected area?
Well, the PFAS sample result that we had was by an independent accredited body.
So, you've had it tested yourself?
Well, if you read the submission, the second submission, you would have known that. The second submission, it was... The test results were...
Fifty-four times the Australian standard.
Fifty-four times the Australian standard for fresh water. The test results, we're laypeople, this is the first time we've done a test result. So, it was done by an independent accredited body, and we further had the results interpreted by an expert in PFAS and PAFOa within the environment.
And was that from your land?
Well, we live in...
That's what I didn't understand about the submission, whether it was your land or somewhere nearby.
I'll answer the question. We live in a Pacific Dunes Community Association. So, literally about 500 residents pay a levy, and it's a community association land. And within that community association land is the Pacific Dunes Golf Club operation. So, there are a number of precincts, and this high-level reading was located within the vicinity of some of those precincts, not specifically in our precinct.
Right.
But we are all part of this community.
That's what I was just struggling to understand. So, it's not that you're personally affected?
Oh, I'm sure. I believe everyone's personally affected, because this waterway trans... All the ponds are interconnected, and I'll go as far as to say, they actually drain out towards Graham Town's Dam, so there are a lot of people affected.
And how long have you lived there for? Is it...
Coming on six years.
Been with us for a while?
We've been there since we purchased it in December 2019, moved in about the May, so what's that, we're coming up five years, four and a half years. The other concern is, this is not... The frothing is not, this is not an isolated thing. There is bubbling and frothing in other areas. I mean, Medawi is... Pacific Dunes has water all the way through it, because it was originally marshland and turned into a golf course. But there is water, body of water, all around Medawi, and this is not the only frothing that's been observed. The only test result that we have to date, so this is potentially a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs McDonald from the opposition?
Thank you for your submissions. Just so that I... Just for clarity, when did you get the tests done?
I'll have to take that on notice, because I'm sorry, I don't know the exact date, but if you like, I can send that to you.
And we're happy to provide the test results, because we think it's in the public interest if the committee want to put those up as part of our submission, I mean, for people to interpret. So, there was a delay in getting the results done, because my father, I'm an Australian, New Zealand Australian, my father had had health episodes through our lives, had been upended and been backwards and forwards between Australia and New Zealand. So, there was a delay in getting that done. We don't know the process in terms of getting testing, accredited testing, so it took time plus being backwards and forwards with New Zealand. So, we first reached out about the, I think it was a couple of days from memory, an email to Kate Fairman and copied in Kate Washington, Merrill Swanson, a whole lot of politicians with the photos. And I think from memory, that was a couple of days I wrote that email after the initial sample was collected, but it was later on in the year.
And to be honest, with the advice from Hunter Water saying, we've got no problem, we've got no problem, I honestly thought, oh, well, it might be a bit above what's the standard or whatever. I was totally astounded. I was in fact devastated, because children have been playing in these water courses. I just, it was so gut-wrenching, I can't describe it.
Paul got the results when he was over in New Zealand, so that would have been in December.
This year?
In December last year. So, I remember the results coming through, and we can provide that, you know, on notice, those specifics. But I remember Paul saying, he cried, because it was the first time we had been validated.
So, when you got the results, and I know you said you don't really, haven't had a good relationship with EPA, did you undertake to get testing done by Hunter Water or perhaps Rose at Pacific Dunes?
We used an accredited laboratory that specialises...
In PFAS.
Exactly. And then, as Dr Walton has already advised, just to make sure we were reading the results right, we had it verified by an expert in the field.
Who has attended this committee, I understand, in a previous hearing? So, they are an expert, but we're very willing and we will provide full test results and in terms of containing details of the accredited agency.
And so, did you raise the concerns with the golf course to see if they would also undertake testing?
Well, we haven't, because management saw what I saw. And their reaction was such that I believe that it showed that they didn't want to engage with them on the ponds then, via the reaction of the management individual turning their head away from them when I was trying to attract their attention.
After Paul, I was working around the back, and he drove round, because he had our car down there where he was working on the stone coin, and he told me what had happened. And he said that the manager was in close proximity to Paul, he had a shocked look on his face, he wouldn't speak or wouldn't look, and walked away. Now, bearing in mind, Paul didn't know what he was seeing, he thought it could be PFAS, but this was all new to us. It looked like it could have been PFAS, but none of us dreamt that it would have been to that level.
And pretty much straight after that, Michael's father had a kidney failure, shouldn't have lived. I jumped on a plane, I was there for months to try and get him back. And thankfully, we did. And so, things progressed beyond my thoughts about it.
And so, what do you believe the impact has been just in your community there?
Well, I can't... I wouldn't hazard a guess to express what that impact could be. I'm hopeful that someone might address the thought of remediation and fixing the problem, but previous experience would suggest to me that it may not be in the interests of the particular government of the day to do so, because this is a very expensive exercise. And everybody wants to allocate their money in different areas, even defence. So, I think, honestly, I think our only solution is to get an independent body involved in this to make sure that our agencies have the best interests of not only residents, but just the basic outcomes of what we're going to face, because the costs... International research shows that the costs of not doing anything, the latest study from the EU has estimated it at $82 billion if they don't address the current levels of PFAS contamination that they face now. And that's just basically containment, trying to remediate what they can. So, I think this is a wake-up call, or it should be.
Yeah. So, you recommend... I'll finish there and say, you... Sorry, one of your hopes is that there's an independent body?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I'll pass to my colleague.
Okay. Sorry, I think it was yourself, Mr Roomes, said something about PFAS containers...
No, that was Dr Walton.
PFAS containers... Were you using agriculture?
Yeah, in a previous submission, Paul read all the submissions, I didn't, but he drew my attention to one, where I understand about, I think it were PFAS drums, or alleged to be PFAS drums, in aquaculture. And this individual that wrote the submission, they included a couple of photos, Paul was reading it out to me, had drawn attention, I think it was a Department of Agriculture at least, and alleges that it had multiple contacts and it had fallen on the EU.
Okay, and that was in one of the submissions for this? Okay. You do know of any... So, you've mentioned these other waterways, I think you mentioned the Graham Town Dam and some of these things. Are you aware of any EPA testing going on in these areas outside of the red zone?
I have been informed by residents that, yes, Hunter Water has been doing testing for PFAS and PAFOa outside of the known red zone.
And are those... The results of that testing, is that available to you as residents of the area?
I don't believe it's been public... Well, they monitor bore water. I was told by Hunter Water, they do not test every bore, because the $50 a test is too expensive. And my concern was, well, you should be at least testing every bore that's used for the Tilley Gory Peninsula. I think to exclude any of them is not best practice.
But in short, do... Have we been informed by Hunter Water or any relevant agency about the PFAS levels that could be problematic to inform real estate, business, health? No.
No.
And more broadly, your views on just the communication from government on this issue?
Well, they post... Defence has numerous posts about the testing of PFAS within the red zone. In fact, voluminous amounts. And I think that should be looked at, because it could easily be 95% of them show very, very, very low levels. And why would you keep testing areas that have very, very, very low levels and just have a few tests which are of significant interest? I think that money should, would be better spent testing outside areas where there may be a spread or a problem. And when I was accessing that information, especially regarding the Salt Ash Weapons Range, where I believe there was a high reading pertaining to a particular well, I think it was well 13, I noticed that subsequent testing couldn't be conducted for, I believe they used contractors, couldn't be done, because either the wells were dry or they were covered by vegetation. Well, when I read that, I felt like lending them my whippersnapper. I mean, this was aside with the significant level, and unfortunately, I couldn't go into further detail, because it appears I can't access that site anymore.
And the test results you have got, who have you shared that?
Only... The expert that we had verified?
With the expert, if we're enabled to name the expert, I'm happy to do that now, but with the expert who's appeared here in an earlier hearing, I think it was in the Jubilee Room. And we forwarded that to Kate Fairman and the submission, which is now publicly available. But we are very happy and we will send the results, so it can be seen transparently, independently looked at.
And you haven't sent it to EPA or anyone like, just because you don't think they'll do anything with it?
No. I would have no, I would have zero, I think we said in the submission, zero confidence in New South Wales EPA. I'm wondering why they're not here today. I understand EPA probably from Sydney are here, but...
Yes, I'm wondering why Newcastle EPA is not here, and certainly the contractors that are doing the testing for Defence. I'd be interested to know why they're not here.
It seems as though the game is test, 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 and retest where there is no result. If you find a problematic result, you'll find a reason why it's inconsistent with tests supposedly around that area, why you can't access it because of vegetation, or a bore's dry, or any manner of, you know, excuses.
Okay, I'd go to a question from Mrs McDonald, just to say that EPA is appearing later today.
Thank you, Chair, and apologies for slight lateness, I was having trouble parking. So, thank you, gentlemen, for coming along today to provide some evidence. Just on the bottom, page four of your submission, the one that's submission number nine, and taking to Dr Walton, the comment which you've just referred to about the zero confidence. In that paragraph, if I could just draw your attention to it, so it's zero confidence in Hunter Water, what in New South Wales, the New South Wales EPA, or the Australian And then you've got to say, as is the case for local government, state, federal representatives, and local media. It's quite a broad umbrella.
It is. It's a strong statement, but...
Sorry, can I just ask you a question? I mean, are there any other entities or organisations or groups or bodies that you, in your evidence today, are saying have effectively done nothing and there is zero confidence you hold in them? Or is this essentially the snapshot of what you think?
Yeah, they're the main ones that come to mind. And I think from the inquiry's hearings, kind of, this problem is not just with what we've identified at Williamtown. Understanding, monitoring, reporting, containing spread, whether spread's been further caused by transportation of waste, monitoring of PFAS drums, whether they're being inappropriately disposed. I mean, these organisations are all responsible for this.
Okay, can I just take you there to the next sentences about the communication that's taken place with honorable Kate Washington and Merrill Swanson, I should say, MP. Apologise for that, about the alleged reporting. Is it your evidence that you have zero confidence in them as well? Is that your submission today?
Well, if I may answer that, because I was one that had communications with both Kate Washington and Merrill Swanson. I met with Kate Washington at the Medawi Market, so I would imagine roughly somewhere around 12 months ago, and spoke to her in relation to my concerns about the spread of PFAS outside the red zone. And as I understood it, Hunter Water would have had some knowledge of that, and I just thought it was in the... Really important that the residents knew about this. So, that was my contact with Kate Washington.
At the market, yes.
Yeah, and my contact with Merrill Swanson would have been just prior to her last election. And it was at a Tonilba Bay Labour Meeting Hall, and from memory, Jacomo Arnett attended that meeting. And again, it was along the same lines about the spread of PFAS and that I felt residents... that I felt residents really needed to have an understanding about this. And it should be of a priority to check with Hunter Water and check about the spread of this PFAS. I might add that I believe Merrill was...
Last question.
...chairing a committee on PFAS as well. So it seemed to me that...
It's very much in her mind, very much in her mind, the issue.
Yeah.
So in terms of looking at the aggregate of all those organisations and individuals, including the media, obviously, local, state, and federal representation, it strikes to me the arguments being advanced that effectively there's a conspiracy operating here.
Oh, I wouldn't go that far, just say conspiracy.
We wouldn't say that, we'd just say there's organisational failure, systemic.
But across, across everyone and everybody?
Well, everyone is a very broad term.
No, no, well, it's sure...
Just one of the top, please, one of the...
Well, well.
Well, I can...
Forgive me, I'm just trying to go, this is a very broad...
I would say Hunter Water, Newcastle.
Mr. Room, just let Mr. Donnelly ask this question.
So that paragraph on the bottom of page four, going to page five, is a very, I think, significant paragraph in your submission number nine, which essentially is articulating that there is, we're talking about a little bit of no confidence, we're talking about zero confidence, in effectively the manifest organisations and individuals here. Now, just, I'm trying to understand. Your submission is that it's that low, it's zero for everyone?
Well, I wouldn't say conspiracy, that's your term. I would say there's systemic organisational failure across multiple organisations. And I believe one of the things that stems from this is because the cost of knowing the truth of spread of PFAS in PFOA, the economic, business, health, and environment costs are such that the executive really don't want to know.
Okay, just at that, I'm sorry, but we have to leave it, because it's over time.
Yeah, we have to.
And it was a very strong closing remark. So thank you so much, Dr. Walton and Mr. Room, for giving the evidence. Sorry, we didn't have more time for you, but we're under pressure today, and appreciate it. Thank you. We'll call our next witness, Professor Naidoo. You get settled, are you right? Okay, all right. We'll begin by getting our next witness, Walton, in. So welcome, Professor Naidoo. If you could please state your name and position, title, and then swear either an oath or affirmation.
So my name is Ravi Naidoo, though my passport name is Ravendra Naidoo. And I have two roles. One is I'm Chief Executive and Managing Director of the Cooperative Research Centre for Contamination Assessment and Remediation of the Environment. The other role that I have is I'm the Distinguished Laureate Professor of the University of Newcastle, and I have a Centre of Excellence within the university as well.
Okay, thank you. Now, do you have a short opening statement for the committee?
Yes, so I thought I would very quickly introduce myself. I'm a born Fijian, naturalised in Australia. I came to Australia to work for CSRRO, and my first thirteen and a half years was with CSRRO, ten years, largely working on contaminants, leading a large team. And I was also the only chief research scientist, the youngest chief research scientist within CSRRO Division of Souls when I left CSRRO. And the reason for leaving CSRRO was...
Sorry, Professor, I hate to do this, but you introduced yourself and then you didn't actually swear, swear or take the affirmation. So I mean, don't swear, but if you could either take the oath or affirmation, please.
Apologies. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, that's a very important part of this whole process. So if you'd like to begin again, thank you.
Thanks, my apologies.
My apologies as well.
So where else? So I left CSR at the end of, after thirteen and a half years with CSRRO. Largely, my keen interest was to establish a national centre of excellence that would focus entirely on contaminants. Because at that point, I recognised that we had nearly 200,000 potentially contaminated sites, and we're not doing much about those sites. Even the policies that we had were not soundly underpinned by sound science. And I was fortunate that with the University of South Australia, we were able to lead a bid, which led for Commonwealth funding to establish the Cooperative Research Centre for Contamination Assessment and Remediation of the Environment, CRC Care, established in September 2005. And very soon after we established CRC Care, we were invited to start comments research on PFAS and PFOA. There weren't many regulatory jurisdictions who were keen at that time. And the reason why we were invited was because this particular member of CRC Care had large volumes of firefighting foam, wastewater, they were storing that and they wanted to clean that. So CRC Care was globally the first to develop the technology to remediate PFAS contaminated wastewater, which we did. And also, we then did a whole lot of research on PFAS, and CRC Care gained global recognition for the work that it had been doing on PFAS. And so since then, we've been, we continue to lead PFAS research. And in 2015, I was invited by University of Newcastle to join University of Newcastle at that time as their Global Innovation Chair. And CRC Care board decided to relocate CRC to the University of Newcastle. And so that's where we are headquartered now. But we continue to do work on PFAS and a whole lot of other contaminants as well.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. So when you said that you, when you first established the work on PFAS and PFOA, when, well, PFAS chemicals, and I think it was PFOS and PFOA, I'm assuming, yes, when was that?
This was in late 2005.
Two thousand and five. And so you said the first to develop the technology to treat PFAS in waste, was that right?
Wastewater.
Wastewater. When was that first successful?
So it took us nearly two years, 2007, we were able to demonstrate that we had the technology. And the technology was then started operating on sites where we had large volumes of PFAS contaminated wastewater by late 2008, early 2009.
Okay, so back, back then, was that technology rolled out to any wastewater treatment plants?
These were largely with members of CRC Care who had brought the challenge to CRC. Because at that time, as you'll recall, none of the state and territory jurisdictions were all that concerned with PFAS. The concern really started up after 2010, 2011.
Yes, and so the technology, I understand we are getting a bit of a tour with you after this hearing, which is excellent. So your technology now, is it being deployed by governments or industry anywhere across the country?
Yes, so we had a plant operating at a number of sites across Western Australia, for example, South Australia, and we also operated in Townsville. But we use the technology to clean water in Darwin. And at one stage, we also helped remediate contained water for the Adelaide Airport.
Okay. Now, I understand you've done work in relation to PFAS, you've tested vegetables. This was a study that was published, I think, in 2023. Could you explain to us what that research found?
Absolutely. The concern that we had was whenever you have any contaminant present in the environment, we always look at sensitive receptors. The sensitive receptors could be microbiota, for example, animals and humans. So when you take one health approach. And so what are the exposure pathways for human, for instance? One is water, of course, and the other is food that we ingest, could be meat, milk, and also vegetables. And our concern was that market vegetables that we have, we actually did not know what sort of nutrients they were applying. And water as well, because Australia, parts of Australia is dry country, and we also use secondarily treated water as well. And so we wanted to know whether we could detect PFAS presence in vegetables. And we went to Sydney Market, for instance, and took vegetables, and also to supermarkets. And not too surprised that we did find PFAS in a number of vegetables.
And so part of this is the, it's difficult to find out what the source of that then is, isn't it? Because this committee is looking at PFAS in waterways and drinking water. But there is an emerging, well, it's been around for some time, but the issue of PFAS in biosolids that are applied to agricultural land. But then there's the addition of what the farmer is irrigating the land with, which could be more of that. Is, does that concern you as a scientist? Do you think that there's a lot of, with biosolids as well as groundwater, that we're really not really understanding the extent of what we're applying onto crops and food? And then you've got the situation, of course, with cattle and dairy, milk. It's a big issue, isn't it?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely very concerning. And this always takes me to cadmium in cereal farms, for example. The moment we figured out that cadmium was present in farms that were supporting wheat and barley, which we're exporting as well, trade was implications in human health as well. The Department of Agriculture was very quick to respond. And then we designed many strategies that made certain that cadmium wasn't transferred from soil to crops, for example. And that's the kind of approach that we need to take here as well, to see what are the farms that have been receiving, for example, biosolids, and where we have also been using secondarily treated water, even that would have low dose of PFAS. The challenge is that plants bioaccumulate. So even the concentrations are very low, plants bioaccumulate, and the concentration could exceed the threshold values.
Yeah, that's right. There's so much to talk about here. But Mr. Barrett, do you go straight to you, I think?
Yeah, sure. The remediation's come a long way, the remediation industry, you know, since you've been involved. How far have we come, and where are we tracking? Can we look down to the future of a time where we can pull this out of the system?
Really good question. Leaving aside PFAS, if you look at conventional contaminants, globally, we have 10 million potentially contaminated sites. And less than 10% have been remedied in the last seven decades. And you can imagine, we are now adding to that PFAS contaminated soils. And PFAS is a, constituents present in PFAS are those that are not easy to biodegrade. So nature-based solutions can be a challenge. And once it is present in soil, you just cannot scrape the soil, put new soil. And therefore, we have to see how we can manage, because you can't extract. The question is, how do we manage? Which is what we're doing with cadmium. We are managing cadmium in cereal farms, but we are not extracting cadmium from cereal farms. And therefore, we still have to invest a lot more. I think the challenge that we, in Australia, we face, is that we always see what others have done from technology perspective. Our soils are very, very different from soils in New Zealand, for example, Japan, India, UK, and US. And when we have people who are doing practitioner work here, they say, we have done it in US, then they bring it here. They're looking for quick solutions, and there's no such thing called quick solutions. And therefore, investment into research is what can lead to solutions. Just like, we were invited to come up with a technology to remove PFAS in parting wastewater. And we developed that, we remediated that, and that did well for the member company that joined CRC Care at the time.
Is the amount of PFAS in the environment decreasing or increasing?
It's really another very, very, very good question. When you look at environment, for example, in soil, it won't decrease, because it, there's no nature-based solution where it's biodegrading, for example. But what will happen is that soils has pores and micro pores, and free form of PFAS will start to migrate into macro and micro pores. And once it is there, it's not easy for it to come out. And it doesn't get taken up by plants either. So it'll take a long time for that. Where water is concerned, for example, if the source of PFAS decreases, then the concentration in water will start to decline as well. So source control is something that we have to target and focus on.
And the PFAS that you found in the vegetables, these were just not, you're not aware of the origin of the vegetables, they're just things you got off the shelf?
A very, very good question, again. You're asking good questions. I did, we did ask these, in the market, where do you get these vegetables? And they won't reveal where they get the vegetables from. And therefore, it was difficult to get to the source of vegetables. But what we do know that those, some of those vegetables did demonstrate presence of PFAS constituents.
And at levels that are concerning to you, like, would you still feed that cucumber to your kids or me?
Again, again, a very good question. There are some vegetables that did bioaccumulate PFAS above threshold values. And we did, for instance, model to look at threshold values and total intake for adults and children. So children were most at risk, and those who are mostly vegetarians, like I am, we are more at risk as well. And those who are non-vegetarians, because you tend to have considerably less vegetables. You do, but not as much as a vegetarian. And therefore, you could see that ingesting lots of, some of those vegetables could lead to exceedance as well.
I better...
Okay, Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you. I was just wondering, with the PFAS, from, just to understand, it can be removed from water, but not soil, is that what you were saying?
Yes, so to remove PFAS from water, largely, it's a filter system that you use. It just soaks up PFAS, and what comes out would be clean water. But once it is present in soil, you could extract it. But that's very expensive, for example.
Yeah.
But you can't degrade it in soil. So there's no nature-based solutions. But you can let it sit and over time. So if you look at, for example, certain contaminants, that's the total present in soil. Over time, it'll decline, the portion that is posing risk. But for PFAS, over time, the decline of the portion that posing risk is like that. The slope is not as steep as some of the other contaminants.
Okay. And in your opinion, what is the most effective PFAS remediation methods currently available?
Another very good question. First and foremost, the target is always to come with a technology that can mineralise PFAS into non-toxic form. There are not many available right now. That said, high temperature incineration is something that people are talking about. But in some countries, they are not going that way, because when you start to incindrate, there'll be fumes that'll come out, and you need to capture those fumes as well. And one of the constituents could be HF, which is quite toxic as well. So that's one technology. The other technologies that we have for water is like ion exchange resin, for instance, the granulated activated carbon, the technology that we have, you filter water through and it removes PFAS. The key thing there is that PFAS is not a single chemical compound, it's a whole range of those. The longer chain ones are those that most of the filter technologies will be able to remove. But the shorter chain is, there's something that we fail and just flows through. And that's what we have to focus on. So the most efficient technology right now is the filter system that people use, ion exchange resin, what we have come up with, granulated activated carbon. For soils right now, it is basically mixing soil with activated carbon, for example. The material that we have come up with will lock PFAS. So locking PFAS is similar to liming cereal growing farms, whereby liming, we are reducing cadmium, which is available for plant uptake, by converting PFAS into those forms where they're locked, preventing it from leaching, preventing it from being taken up by plants.
Okay, I'll just go to questions from government members. Now, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, thank you for your evidence today.
Yeah, thank you for your evidence today. I just wanted to come back to one of the issues that you raised a little bit earlier, where you talked about the source of PFAS in wastewater. And that being an issue that needs to be considered in terms of producing it. That source of that PFAS in wastewater, have you done any research to identify, you know, where it is and whether areas are increasing? Is it things like cosmetics, microplastics, clothing? Is it areas like that that are providing that source material or?
Yes, thank you very much. In fact, we've just finished writing our technical guidance document, which we worked with Water Research Australia, in which we have listed potential sources. And those that you have just mentioned are potential sources as well. So it is multiple sources. And where a community is involved as well, it's not always easy to manage those sources.
And are they increasing as contributors to the wastewater over time? Is there any research that's looked at that?
So the work that we have done thus far, you do not see a steep decline.
Which suggests it's increasing.
Yes, that's right. Pharmaceuticals, for example, you can't prevent, for instance. But of course, in the house, we have carpets, for example, that itself is a source in the kitchen as well. And pharmaceuticals.
And look, you talked about the bioaccumulation relation to vegetables. But obviously that would apply to animals also that are eating those vegetables. And is the importance of treating that wastewater, because it's one of the few mechanisms where we may be able to pull it out of that system? So it isn't accumulating as the water ends up back on farms and people eat it and so on? Is it because it's one of the few areas where we can extract it and then potentially deal with it? Is that?
Absolutely right. So always, because I also chair the United Nations Food and Agriculture Organisation International Network on Pollution. And Food and Agriculture Organisation has this one health approach, where soil health, for example, plays a very significant role where animal and human health are concerned. And where soil is concerned, for example, moisture is quite important, whatever you grow. And hence, Australia being a dry continent, for example, we tend to use the secondly treated water. And you are so right, that if we are able to remove these potential pollutants from that water, we won't be increasing the loading of soils and hence reducing uptake of pasture, for example, by plants as well.
And where's this technology that you've developed? Has that been rolled out in wastewater?
No, we did have that for a number of years. And then we have a number of large consulting companies, they come up with their own technologies, which is similar. And they start to.
And is it something you would do at a wastewater treatment plant? Or is it a technology that's perhaps adaptable to do at a, you know, a household level with someone's own series?
So we can do it at household level and we also have it on mobile. So that's why in Darwin, we just took it on a trailer and remediated very large volumes of water there. For it back, we did the same thing for towns as well. So we are still storing that. So if somebody invites, we can go and do that as well.
Thanks.
Just a couple. Thank you, Professor. Thank you for the very thoughtful submission. And we look forward to hearing further evidence from you. Hopefully see us afternoon. In terms of the narrative about PFAS, a number of the submissions have said, I don't want to overstate it or understate it, but it's everywhere. It's a generic statement that's made. It's unavoidable, it's everywhere. Which of course has the potential to create a sense of, listen, nothing can be done because it's so manifest everywhere. But dealing with the matter of source though, at least as we progress forward, is critical, isn't it? Dealing with the matter of the source. Now, the matter with respect to fire retardant obviously is centred most in people's thinking, particularly in evidence up here and our inquiry more broadly. But other, other sources that are actually still occurring, are you able to provide any insights into? And I appreciate you, at least in part answered that from my colleague. But are you able to elucidate on the sources and particularly those that might be growing? Because it raises or expanding, because that raises issues about regulation.
Yes, I mean clothes itself, for example. And I'll give you an example. Can't name the place in US, they did research where they looked at blood serum for firefighters, for example. And they looked at PFAS constituent, the foam, and they tried to map against what was present in serum. They couldn't map that. So they basically asked this question, where are they getting this from? Then they figured out that they were wearing their suits.
Right.
And because you're sweating as well, when you're training or firefighting, sweat also helps release PFAS. And they could see one-to-one linkage between what was coming from their suit and what was present in serum. So that's one example of a source. You might eliminate, have clean water, but you're wearing that and out there trying to dose fire. But then you have PFAS that's coming from there as well. So that's, that's one certain example. The other one is utensils as well. Like, for example, my scientists, when they started working on PFAS, they all had to go and get their blood checked for PFAS. And there's one instance where PFAS was pretty high and he was using non-strength and not stick utensils all the time. So clearly the source for him was that. And we said, no more of that. And gradually started to decline. So source could be water, it could be food that you're eating, for example, what you wear, for instance. And of course, within your house itself, your carpets, for example, or a whole lot of other things be present in there as well. And duration of exposure becomes very important as well.
Did you just lose that final point about the exposure of the last part you just referred to about the time being important?
So duration of exposure is really important. So if you, for example, ingest food today which might have PFAS, if you do it over a sustained period, you've been ingesting quite a lot. But one of, it's not an issue at all, but the total daily intake plays a very significant role as well. That's, I'll give an example again. I was one of the first in Bangladesh to let the committee know that rice could be a potential source of arsenic to Bangladeshis. They all rejected that. They said rice arsenic content was so low, below threshold values. And I said, look at the volume of rice that they ingest. So I went from house to house, taking, weighing the rice that they were having morning, for lunch, for dinner, looking at the concentration. And I said, look, it easily exceeds TDI. So how much you ingest, how long you ingest can play a very significant role as well.
Thank you.
Professor Naidoo, so with biosolids, have you had much to do with the biosolids review that's happening within government? Have you provided any advice or research in that area?
Yes, so my team has been working on biosolids. And the research that we do has been sponsored by utilities, water industries. The few things that we're doing there, one is looking at biosolids amended soils and whether there is PFAS present and transfer PFAS from soil to vegetables, for example. We are also working on, what the utilities have come up with is that you can convert biosolids into biochar. And during that process, they said that PFAS is eliminated from biosolids. Now that, doing that at about 600 degrees Celsius, which is different from what we all knew that you needed about 1000 degrees Celsius for PFAS mineralization. And therefore they have provided us a project where we are looking at biochar derived from biosolids to see whether the biochar still has PFAS. If it has, and then what is the form of PFAS? And does it become available to plants? Because biosolids can be a very rich source of nutrients as well. So they have invested money and we're working on that. But also we are working on affluent amended soils, looking at PFAS present in soil, again for water industries. And whether it's leaching and if it is leaching, what can we do to prevent leaching?
Yes, because my understanding with the treatment of biosolids to biochar to date, most of the PFAS stays in the biochar and that's the issue, isn't it? Like.
So as a scientist, that's what I would say as well, but the industry, they have done all the work. And what I understand from them is that biochar, PFAS disappears, it's removed from biochar. And that takes me to research conducted where they found that if you similarly treat PFAS in the presence of granulated activated carbon, which catalyzes the mineralization of PFAS now. Whether that's, that's one reason why PFAS disappears from biochar, from biosolids when you chite? I don't know, but we're doing work on that now.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Professor. We're out of time, but we get some time with you later, which is good. So thank you so much for appearing today and your work in this area. The committee will be in touch if you agree to take anything on notice or if we've got any further questions with you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Professor.
So if you could state your name and position, title, please, and then swear either an oath or affirmation.
Right. My name is Robert Manning. My affirmation, I solemnly swear solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that evidence now I'm about to give or about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And just your position title or the, you're here on?
I have several titles. I'm here today as the General Manager of SO double R. But I started this journey as a community science lead on the Central Coast Council's Changemaker Programme.
Okay, great. And do you have an opening statement for us?
Other than to say that as a concerned citizen, I entered the Tugra Lakes, or I entered the Central Coast Changemakers Programme because of the degradation of Tugra Lakes. I live on Tumby Creek. I observed pollution in that creek and set about the Changemakers course to find out what it was and how it could be remediated. During that process, I discovered a company which at the time was operating as Sustainable Oil Recovery. And then we were success, I was successful in getting a grant under the Changemakers Programme, which led to the Tugra estuaries and stormwater trial on the Central Coast Council's Tugra Lakes. We deployed the Sustainable Oil Recovery boom in several locations on the lake. And it was the results that came back from the tests of that that have led me to then now become the General Manager of SO double R, the Sustainable Oil Company, changed its name, changed its focus, changed its trajectory. And we are now operating in India, the UK. We're about to launch in South America and will also be in the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia by the middle of this year. We've had a great range of success with the solutions that we offer, which we believe to be a new remediation method for PFAS. That's what I'm here to talk about.
Okay, great. Thank.
Thank you.
Sorry, was that?
No, that's it. Thank you.
So just going back to the contamination firstly in Tugra Lakes. So was it, was there known contamination of PFAS? Or did you discover that in your cleanup work firstly?
So the remediation work for PFAS, for the Tugra Lakes started as hydrocarbons, because the gyrode sponge, the saw gyrode sponge was developed to capture oil in water. When we deployed it at Shaw Street, Long Jettie 15, 16 and 19 are the names of the stormwater outlets we deployed it in. The test results, we worked with the Newcastle Global Centre for Environmental Remediation, Chem Centre Labs in WA and Microanalysis Labs to conduct analysis both on the water and the sponge that we'd deployed. We found that the sponge not only was removing hydrocarbons in the form of C10 through C40 hydrocarbons, but it also was taking out heavy metals such as phosphorus, strontium, zinc, lithium and other metals. But we also were capturing 2.4 grams of PFAS chemicals across the full range of both short and long string PFAS chemicals in the sponge. And the sponge was able to hold those chemicals. And we then reported that to council in April of 2023. And then by April of 24, when we said we're still discovering PFAS in that water, we were asked to take the booms out and they removed our signage from the work that we're doing. So there's no longer any remediation activity happening on Tugra Lake. However, on Arimba Creek, the Newcastle University had conducted necropsies on platypus and discovered that the platypus in Arimba Creek, which flows into Tugra Lake, had been contaminated and had actually, were deceased with large quantity of PFAS in their system. So we know that the PFAS that's in the water there is contaminating the marine life. It is in the soil that is in at Tugra Lake. And it also is continuing to come through the stormwater outlets.
Okay, so you had this boom in place firstly, where you discovered that there were PFAS chemicals. Was it a range of different chemicals? You've got that analysis?
Correct, yeah, there are full analysis. And I think in the submission, there's details of the range of chemicals that are there. But subsequently, we've worked with a laboratory in the UK called Oiretech, who, sorry, Socatech, who are one of the world leaders in testing water samples in the, I suppose, spill response arena. And we've, we've had it confirmed that the gyrode sponge is capable of capturing the full range of the PFAS chemicals. And then the destruction process we use, which is a titanium dioxide decomposition process, has the capability to actually break those chemical bonds that hold the strings of PFAS together. Because it operates at a temperature of around 800 degrees Fahrenheit, Fahrenheit, sorry, 800 degrees Celsius without the use of flame. So it's a process that is normally used for chemical waste, but it's been developed to tackle our sponge and PFAS.
How long was it, how long was your sponge, your boom in the water at Tugra Lake?
For over 15 months.
So over 15 months. And then you approached Central Coast Council?
We approached Central Coast Council within the first three months of the deployment of the booms. Reported that as part of the Tugra estuaries and stormwater trial started as a grant programme under the Australian Federal Government Estuary Reconstruction Programme or some such. And so when the results of the testing were coming through for the hydrocarbons, David, me and the local member for the entrance had identified that a number of Long Jettie outlets were contaminated with diesel. And so we were asked to deploy the sponges to pick up the diesel that was coming through the stormwater. But it's the same results were coming back for the PFAS at that 2.94 grams per kilogram.
So just talk us through, and I'll go to other members some questions. Talk us through what happened when the council told you to take the booms away and that was it? Talk us through that. So you notified them of the results and then what happened?
So we suggested that we could help remediate that using, the sponge has three things that it can do. It can do diagnostics, can do remediation, it can do prevention. So we put a proposal to them. We were told by the Central Coast Council that they had problems across their waterways and they couldn't pick and choose which waterway they started with or did work on. We asked them to sign a release saying that we are happy to take the booms out, but don't want to have any responsibility for any action further down the track. They wouldn't do that. And then they asked us to take them out. We did.
Other questions by members? We'll go to the opposition. Mrs. McDonald.
So with the, once you've removed, sorry, start again. Thank you for your submission. So it's not a once-off solution, is it? It has to be repeated.
It has to be repeated because the PFAS, and I don't know whether it's come out in your inquiry so far, but the PFAS will settle in the sediment on the base of. but the PFAS will settle in the sediment on the base of a riverbed, a lake, creek, in the sediment that builds up in stormwater outlets. And so as the water passes through, either the water has contaminants already. You never find PFAS in isolation. It's always mixed waste, right? So any water sample will be mixed waste. It's very easy when you're taking water samples to simply put your finger in the water and say, that's what's in that water and that's it. When really what you should be doing is trying to get a longer analysis of the water. So the sponge in its diagnostic form is capable of doing that. The water will continue to pass through. We know from the research that we've done, and I should just say too, that whilst I don't have any scientific qualifications, our chief research officer is a gentleman by the name of Professor Dr Richard Benati, who was a distinguished fellow of the ANSTO, the Australian Nuclear Technology and Science Organisation. He's the gentleman who identified the qualities of the gyrode sponge, being the fact that it's a gyrode structure which has some physical properties, some chemical properties, and then what he's scientifically called some indeterminate or undescribable properties because it does things that we didn't think it could do. And PFAS retention is one of them. And so from our perspective, the remediation can be done in the water. So as water passes through, the sponge is capable of taking the PFAS out and after, you know, over ninety percent of the PFAS can be removed from the water in a single pass. So if we were to set up in serial, the way that granular activated carbon is used, we believe that our solution not only cheaper, easier to deploy and then easier to maintain and keep going, because of the end of life cycle of our product, the way that we designed it, it takes the PFAS out of the environment. As, and I think, I don't know if you have recognized my name as the person who helped set up the organ and tissue Friends of Parliament for New South Wales, I'm a liver transplant recipient and I'm immune compromised. So I'm very particular about what I do with my time and how I do things. I'd actually retired onto the Central Coast. And when I saw PFAS in the water, that raised a alarm bell. So for the last two and a half years, I've spent a considerable amount of time trying to understand this challenge. The reality is, when it comes to the range of chemicals, we can look at taking it out of the water. We can deploy trench based soil remediation. So as groundwater rises up through the soil, that will flush the PFAS out. PFAS is not the sort of chemical that just sits there and waits for something to happen. In December of 2024, just a couple of months ago, I went to the Christie's Beach or Christie's Hill Metropolitan Fire Service Station, which was a contaminated site. And I was expecting, although I'd grown up in Adelaide, to go and see a fire station on the top of a hill, isolated, right next door. And it was on the high side of a mound. It wasn't a hill in Adelaide, you know, it's probably very flat. There was a Telstra building and then sixteen flats on the same residential block. So that fire station, and I'd spoken to the senior fire officer who was involved, never used fire retardant chemicals on that site. So the PFAS that's on that site, they're being blamed for. But he tells me that it's not from them. There's a lot of industry around there. So the PFAS chemicals, as we've found, are proliferating through. And so fire retardant chemicals are the easy target. Right? So if you see a fire, the fire, you know, it's over there, that's where the fire, but who started it? Where did it come from? So the reality is PFAS, yes, it is out there, but it can be remediated one waterway at a time without the complex nature of the granular activated carbon. Because one of the challenges you have with CAC is that once you've contaminated it, you have to then either incinerate it or bury it. So we either burn it or bury it. When you burn it, you create other toxins. When you bury it, you create a problem for later on. But if you use titanium dioxide decomposition, we can break it down.
And is your technology at commercial scale?
It is. And the frustrating part is on the twenty eighth of January this year last week, we signed a $20 million contract with Bharat CSR Network in India to deploy across the rivers of Goa, the Waste Management Centre, the Goa Waste Pollution Control Board. So we've had success overseas. We're going to the Interspiel Conference in April in the UK. We launched in June last year. We have knocked on virtually every door here. I've written to journalists from every media outlet, the ABC, the nine, everyone, telling them that we've got a solution here in Australia. I am a member of the Anstow Nand and Innovation Crew. I co-chaired a webinar with Dr Stuart Field and Dr Elizabeth Tondel. And we spoke about the capabilities that we have. And we just can't get traction in this market because like when we reported it to the Central Coast Council, they turned away and said, thank you, but problems to be addressed.
And so just in your opinion, would mandatory sort of industry funded remediation be an effective solution?
I think potentially so. I think one of the challenges that you've probably heard is that it's difficult to identify the source. One of the reasons why it's difficult to identify the source is it's difficult to collect the PFAS in significant quantities to determine who the source is. One of the things that I heard, one of the earlier presentations when it was the professor and or the two gentlemen before Professor and I do, they said that there's a lack of interest from people like the EPA and others. We, I believe that we actually report it to them, whether it's PFAS, hydrocarbons or other chemicals. The sponge acts like a vault. So as the toxins pass through the saw gyrode sponge, they're captured and they can be captured in sufficient quantity to start doing things like fingerprint analysis of working out where did that come from? So we're able to tell the Central Coast Council the type of diesel, the type of chemicals that were in that diesel. And so we can do the same with PFAS. You can work out what PFAS is used to put into fuels as catalysts for the different temperature to set the fuel off. Into vaccines, for the vaccine, when we had the COVID vaccine, the chemicals used in that to set it off at body temperature, they're not necessarily good for us long term. But the reality is we can assist in diagnostics, identification, prevention and remediation.
Okay, I might just need to go to questions from government members and.
So thank you very much. And it's very enlightening. Congratulations on the work that's been put into the technology. With respect to the point you made about the collection using the boom, that obviously will capture that flowing down through a channel or pipe, whatever the case may be. You made, so that's flowing in. Interesting if you could elucidate on the matter of the residue that may be on the bottom of the water. Is, how does it capture that? Because if it's actually just looking in, and once again, thank you for your submissions and your supplementary submission on page two, a picture of the boom, that catches what's flowing, but what the residue that may be beyond the boom, it may well be the case that's already.
Settled.
Yes.
Yeah. So one of the great things about the saw gyrode sponge is its versatility and flexibility in deployment. As a company, when I started, the company was, you know, it was focusing on things like build socks for boats in marinas. The deployment on the Tugger estuaries and stormwater trial proved to us that we can using, by using a process engineering application, so looking at what is the dirty water, what is the clean water? What do you want taken out of that water to make it clean? And then what is the scenario that you find yourself in? So we have now done tests for trench remediation, curtain deployment, column deployment.
So could you explain what trench remediation means?
So trench remediation is where we would actually dig a trench. So if you wanted to build a barrier, you could dig a trench, lay some agricultural pipe. And I've got some, all of this can be provided to the committee or the hearing, sorry. We could lay a trench of saw gyrode boom in agricultural pipe, for example, so that the water can pass through it, so it doesn't impede. And as the water passed from one side of the boom to the other, the water that passed through the soil would then be, the water that hit the other side of the soil would actually have either no PFAS or reduced PFAS as a result of it. So it's actually deploying the sponge into the ground so that you collect groundwater. So we're currently in discussions with the Department of Defence to look at Ambly Air Force Base and building trench remediation around the runway there. It wouldn't, the great thing about the saw gyrode sponge is it doesn't have to deploy in exactly the same way in every environment. And we heard Professor and I do talking about the different soils that exist here in Australia versus other places. But I'd also argue that one of the reasons we have 200 wine districts in Australia is because we have different soil in the Clare Valley and Barossa Valley versus the Hunter Valley. So the wine's out of the Hunter Valley. I still think it's superior, but that's irrelevant. We can deploy it using our page process, which is the pollutant adaptive gradient extraction process, which is where we treat the sponge either with heat, chemicals or the way in which it's deployed. And then by looking at what is the dirty water, what is the clean water, we can engineer a solution for a lot less budget than what is currently the remediation processes that are used globally.
My final question before I pass my colleague. Going back to the matter of the project on the lake, Tugger Lake. I didn't quite understand that part of your explanation whereby as you approached the conclusion of the project, the timeline for it, did you have concern of potential liability as a business?
Correct. Having identified PFAS.
Okay, right. So that that might be a matter that could be liability.
Yes.
In a legal sense.
So if I was a first responder, an ambulance officer, and I put a bandage on you and just before you got into the ambulance and went off, you said, can you take the bandage off me? And then you bled out. Yeah?
Yes, okay.
Am I responsible for your death? And so in this case, we identified PFAS on Tugger Lake. It's now been confirmed from other studies around Lake Memora and the northern part of Tugger Lakes and on Arimba Creek, that PFAS is prevalent throughout the waterways of the Central Coast. And having brought that to council's attention and been dismissed, we didn't want to have anyone going back through this sort of inquiry saying, well, hang on, this company here identified that to you, and then they pulled their booms out.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And thanks for your submission. I just wanted to ask a bit more about the trial that occurred at Tugger Lakes. And just see, you know, in terms of the feedback from the council and I said, you said they're not interested in taking up the technology and rolling it out elsewhere. You know, was there anything detrimental that came out of the trial, for example? I mean, is it a hazard to fish?
From my perspective, you know, this, representing the state of New South Wales as a politician, to talk about the council as a monolith is probably the wrong way to look at it. The people in the waterways were very concerned about what was happening. And they were actually the people pushing for us to widen the use of the booms across Tugger Lakes. Other areas, engineering, stormwater, and those people whose budget it was probably going to come out of were the ones who were reluctant to progress and do more about it. So there are people within council who want to resolve the problem. But then they'll turn around and say, well, we can't do anything because we've got to look at air and, or we've got to look at, you know, other waterways within the council.
Sure. But were there any other concerns raised by them as a result of the trial or was it just a money issue? I mean, you know, no government wants to be responsible for paying.
We said that would be.
So it should be the state or somebody else. But outside the money, were there any other issues that came up?
No, certainly when you talk about money too, we said we'd work with the EPA so that polluter would pay. So but the original purpose of the trial was to take hydrocarbons out of order. So as soon as we went beyond our scope, that was identified as the reason. So not, they didn't say that, well, you've identified PFAS, we don't want to touch it. They said, well, the issue with regarding hydrocarbons, we've got problems everywhere. So.
So have you looked to do a PFAS or a FOWA specific trial with the sponge somewhere?
Yes. So as I said, we're working with the engineering company that's looking after Ambly Air Force Base to put that process in trial. And we've been working with the PFAS remediation team for the federal government since October of 2023 to develop that trial. One of the problems that we had, and this is in an email which I can provide to the committee, we were told that our original scope for the proof of concept demonstration at $35,000 was well below their normal budget for these sort of activities.
And that was a problem?
So too cheap a solution.
Too cheap a solution, which is probably why it's been picked up in India because over there we can do a lot more with a lot less. And they're happy to do that.
What was your response? That's Karen Shorty. What was your response when that was put to you?
Well, it's like I've said on the global stage in presentations, we're a first world country with first world problems and we don't like third world solutions. When a third world solution is all we need to fix this problem.
Can I ask then, just in terms of around, I'm sorry, they're not going, just around the area, Central Coast, what is being done that you know of to clean up PFAS in waterways? Is there anything?
As far as I'm aware, nothing.
Okay, thank you.
And that was born out of the fact that after the Newcastle University's Arimba campus, which is right on Arimba Creek itself, identified through the necropsies of the platypus, which was, you know, I went on ABC Radio at the end of last year to talk about that specific issue with Scott Levi. And we've had zero response from them because they've had zero response from anyone who wants to help them identify it. Because we actually offered, and I'll do the same with Professor and I do, we're happy to offer our gyrode sponge to anyone for free to demonstrate its capabilities because we believe it's an Australian discovery backed by research advanced by science that is going to take off, has taken off overseas, but not here at home.
Mr Barrett?
Possibly a very broad question and asking from a community perspective. What does Utopia look like for you with this product? Like, how do we, are we using it to stop PFAS getting in waterways? Are we going to, like, can we use it to clean up the situation we saw in Katerma the other day? And then I guess if you want to go on a bit of a ramble, what do you need to get to that point?
A very good question. And I've heard that said to you a few times today. Utopia looks like where we understand just how big the problem is. I think it's easy to say it's too big for us to address. One of the challenges that we have, and we heard before about from the two speakers before me, the ability to actually test where the problem is. Like, it reminds me of the story of the police officer who went over to the drunk guy staggering around under the street light. And the officer said, are you okay? And he says, yeah, I'm looking for my keys. I can't find them. He said, did you lose them around here? He said, no, I lost them over there, but there's no light and I can't see. So we're happy, it seems to be as bureaucracies, to say, well, if we don't know where the problem is or where it's coming from, then we don't have to look everywhere for it because everyone's saying it's everywhere. So if it's everywhere, we can't fix it. The reality is, if you can identify source by even within something like Arimba Creek, Tunby Creek, Brisbane Water, you know, the Sydney Harbour, we're looking to work with Sydney University on trials where we put it in at places like Rhodes and other places. Because for me, how do we get there? As I said, we're happy to give our sponge to anyone who wants to demonstrate the capabilities of this product. The reality is, we can develop solutions, like Professor and I do said, at residential level so that it can be used for filters on taps. We can use it for trench remediation around long runways for the airports. And every airport in the world has the problem. So they're part of the 10 million sites that are contaminated. The reality is, we stand on the precipice of something that is well beyond our comprehension as to how vast this problem is and how long it will take to clean up. But we have to start somewhere. Our solution is, you know, a fraction, like many fractions less than the current methodologies that are used. So if we look at the Blue Mountains Water Treatment Plant, very curious that they announced that there was PFAS in the water, shut the dams down and three months later opened up a three and a half million dollar plant. I don't know how you could build it that quickly. So they knew it was there for a long time before they announced it. And that's the same in every council. We're currently talking with Shire Biz, which is a group down in the southern Shire, to see how we can help them with Silvania Waters and other waterways. But we're a small team. How do we get there? We're going to do it because as a company, we've decided that we are going to clean the world's oceans one waterway at a time. Thankfully, the Indian state government of Goa found, you know, that we were the right solution for them. And as the money flows in from that, we'll deploy it here on backyard projects.
Are the booms manufactured here in Australia?
The booms can be made here in Australia. The gyrode sponge is, has to go through a particular process, which we've had, we've only found two manufacturers in the world that can do what we need them to do. Only one was prepared to use our formula. They're based in Malaysia. We bring the sponge from Malaysia and we create the booms both here in New South Wales and in Perth. But in, our whole philosophy is. But in, our whole philosophy as a company, and it, it is to, if I was to just take a, a leaf out of our Indian company, which I travelled to India for the first time in May of 24, was to pick up on Modi's vision of made in India, sold to the world. But ultimately, as a company, we want to make the victims of pollution the beneficiary for remediation. So in India, for example, the San Puana women, which is the self sustainability, it does sound gender biased, but in India it is a very gender biased country. They call them the San Puana women. They're going to be making the booms from recycled fabric that they recycle themselves with the sponge that we give them, and they're giving the booms to the fishermen who will fish for oil and troll for plastic, and then turn that into valuable building materials.
Just a couple of quick questions.
There's no time for a couple of quick questions. Sorry.
One quick question?
He took the last one. No, he took the last one. 10:46, 10:46. Thank you so much for appearing, Mr. Manning. I think we could have gone on for some time. That was very interesting. The committee will be in touch with you if you took anything unnoticed. I'm not sure you did, but I wish you all the luck and thanks again for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
The mistake you made. Witnesses from Hunter Water. So we'll start with you, Mr. Cleary. If you could state your name and position, title, and then swear either an oath or affirmation, please.
Good morning. Darren Cleary, Managing Director of Hunter Water. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Berry?
Good morning. Emma Berry. I'm the Executive Manager of Strategy and Engagement at Hunter Water. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Excellent. Mr. Cleary, I assume you've got an opening statement?
I do. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I would like to begin by acknowledging the Wabacal and Warrima people here in Newcastle and pay respects to the traditional custodians of the lands and waters upon which Hunter Water operates. I understand that the committee will also be meeting with my colleagues at Sydney Water and Water in South Wales. And while there are many similarities between our businesses, there are also some differences amongst the three state-owned corporations and how waters manage across the region. So I'll start by briefly summarizing Hunter Water's role and how it relates to PFAS. Hunter Water provides water, wastewater, and some stormwater and recycled water services to a population of about 640,000 people across the lower Hunter region. We're established almost 130 years ago for the public health and take seriously our obligations as custodians of drinking water for the communities we serve. We're responsible for drinking water management from catchment to tap, owning and managing two surface water dams, Chichester and Grahamstown, and several aquifer water sources, the Tomago, Tomare, and Annabay sand beds, and drawing water from the Patterson, Allen and Williams River. Construction is presently underway on our region's next water source augmentation, our new desalination plant at Belmont, anticipated to be completed by 2028. Our drinking water is regulated by the National Health and Medical Research Council's Australian Drinking Water Guidelines via conditions imposed in our operating licence issued by the government and regulated by IPART, the Independent Processing and Regulatory Tribunal. We're required to maintain a fully implemented drinking water quality management system that's consistent with these guidelines and to the satisfaction of New South Wales Health. Our compliance with our operating licence, including performance against the Australian Drinking Water Guidelines, is audited annually by IPART. As the region's wastewater service provider, we're responsible from toilet to sink through the treatment and release of treated water back to the environment, including managing biosolids. Our wastewater operation is regulated in accordance with our various environment protection licences and New South Wales Biosolid Guidelines set, as set by the New South Wales EPA. Both Hunter Water and myself personally have an extensive history dealing with PFAS, particularly in relation to the contamination emanating from the historic use of firefighting foams at Raph Base Williamtown, which sits atop a portion of the Tomago Sandbed Aquifer. In 2015, the New South Wales Government publicly advised that PFAS chemicals had been detected in water leaving Raph Base Williamtown and established the Williamtown Investigation Area. An expert panel was established, and I was represented, and I represented Hunter Water as a member. Hunter Water's role was coordinated as part of the New South Wales Government's response. Our responsibility took several elements. Firstly, for the local communities surrounding Raph Williamtown, former Premier Baird and Parliamentary Secretary Scott McDonald directed Hunter Water to connect properties within the Williamtown Investigation Area to Hunter Water's articulated water network to provide access to safe drinking water. Via this programme, 350 properties in Williamtown, Saltash and Fullerton Cove were connected to our network. The $4.9 million project was initiated by the New South Wales Government and later funded by the Commonwealth. Secondly, Hunter Water developed a comprehensive plan to safely manage the Tomago sand beds, drinking water source for our whole community via the PFAS operating strategy for the Tomago borefield. This strategy was developed based upon the best national and international advice and was reviewed and endorsed by the PFAS Expert Panel, which at the time was chaired by the New South Wales Chief Scientist. The strategy includes an embargo on two pump stations in proximity to Raph Base Williamtown, Pump Stations 7 and 9, and comprehensive water quality monitoring prior to the water being supplied to our customers. The current strategy was approved in 2018 and continues to comply with the Australian Drinking Water Guidelines. Thirdly, we have implemented an extensive PFAS testing and reporting programme for the borefields and across our water network. Under this programme, Hunter Water samples for PFAS in our catchments and untreated water at all six of our drinking water treatment plants and at 83 locations across our drinking water network. The summary of the results is published on our website each month for transparency with our community. Additionally, each quarter Hunter Water and New South Wales Health review all PFAS results across our drinking water system. This dataset is extensive, with more than 4,000 samples collected within our drinking water distribution system since 2016, which is representative of the treating, treated water we provide to our customers. A further 4,000 samples have been collected from our catchments and raw or untreated water at our water treatment plants. Over time, our understanding of PFAS chemicals continues to improve, as does the sensitivity of laboratory testing. In our treated water samples, we do infrequently get low-level positive texts of PFAS. And of the 4,000 samples taken, approximately 150 have reported low-level detections. We have documented procedures for responding to PFAS detections, including engagement with New South Wales Health. If this is of interest to the committee, I can talk you through examples of this. Through this comprehensive testing and monitoring and the controls we have in place, our customers and community can be confident that their drinking water remains safe. And drinking water meets the current Australian Drinking Water Guidelines for PFAS, and then our analysis indicates that it will meet the requirements of the proposed Australian Drinking Water Guidelines. Briefly and for completeness, with respect to our role as a wastewater service provider, our wastewater network collects sewage from homes and businesses across the region. Like our water treatment processes, our existing wastewater treatment processes are not effective at removing PFAS chemicals should they enter the sewer network. As a result, our focus has been on preventing PFAS being disposed by our customers within their wastewater discharges. This is required proactive and at times difficult engagement with our commercial trade waste customers. The most prominent example of this is the former Trugain Australian Waste Oil Refinery's facility at Rutherford. The management of wastewater for PFAS chemicals is an emerging area of regulation, and we work closely with our peer agencies as regulatory landscape adjusts to the latest science. Both at the Commonwealth level via the draft PFAS National Environmental Management Plan 3.0, and at a state level with the New South Wales EPA. We support submissions from other utilities for regulation to better mitigate PFAS chemicals at their source, which will go some way to prevent them from entering the water or wastewater, helping to prevent the need for further technically challenging and costly treatment actions. Finally, I understand that the committee is interested in the resourcing capacity and coordination of PFAS responses by agencies and the financial and water security implications of taking contaminated water sources offline. For Hunter Water, with the exception of the Williamtown Water Reticulation Programme that I referenced earlier, our PFAS response is fully funded by our customers through their water bills. These costs are not insignificant. In the most recent financial year, we invested in the order of $235,000 to undertake PFAS sampling and testing alone, with similar amounts incurred each year since 2016. We consider this to be a prudent investment in the safety of our region's water supply. Further, there is a quantifiable cost borne by our customers through the existing embargo of the two bore stations I mentioned within the Tomago Sandbeds Aquifer. Our sand beds are our drought water reserve, providing especially valuable water during dry periods. The embargoed bores can provide a combined yield of around 1 billion litres per year on average, and up to 10 million litres per day during peak production, representing about 10% of the accessible storage for the Tomago sand beds. The cost of permanently losing access to this water to our community is in the order of 50 to 150 million and would require us to bring forward our region's next source augmentation to maintain our water security. Thank you for inviting us to present the inquiry.
Thank you very much. I assume Hanside will want that opening statement from you, that's for sure. So if you're able to hand it up at some stage, that would be good. Mr. Cleary, so who is responsible for monitoring the movement of the groundwater or contaminated groundwater in the Williamtown kind of area? Who's overall responsible for that?
We have responsibility for monitoring it with respect to our drinking water source, which covers the majority of the aquifer. So, and our responsibility obviously relates to using that as a drinking water source. And that's the results we provide in New South Wales Health. We do also share those with other agencies such as New South Wales EPA as part of that PFAS task force. So the New South Wales EPA have responsibilities that relates to environmental protection and contaminated, managing contaminated sites.
So the two, the two pump stations, seven, it was seven and nine, is that right? There's an embargo on those two. What's the, like PFAS levels within those two pump stations? I assume you test them regularly?
Uh, we don't, we, we don't test them regularly at, at the moment, because testing them, getting representative samples requires you to run the bores. And so we don't test them very regularly, and they're not in production. We have never had a PFAS detect at Bore Station 7. And that's due to the hydrology of the region, but we've isolated it to be, as a very conservative approach, to ensure that we're not drawing contaminated water into that bore. At Bore Station 9, it's relatively, it's at levels that have been, I think, above the Australian Drinking Water Guidelines, but relatively low levels, but I'd have to take on notice the exact concentrations.
Okay. And is the contamination moving in the groundwater? Is there a plume of PFAS contaminated water that is, that is on the move?
Yes. Look, our understanding is, there certainly is. The groundwater generally in that area of the Tomago Sandbeds moves from north to south. And that groundwater is migrating off the Raph Base. We are not the best placed to give advice about that, because it's not our focus, it's not what we, what we do. But it is certainly migrating, and I think the testing that has been made publicly available shows that it is clearly migrating off the base. And the, it's worth noting that there is a strong connection between the groundwater and the surface water, particularly in that area. So it can be migrating both through the ground and through the surface water.
Yeah. Sorry. So who is responsible for that then? When you said it wasn't you, who, who publishes that and, and informs the community about it? Is it Defence? Is it the EPA?
Uh, look, the details are best questioned directed to the EPA, because there is complications given the different jurisdictions of the Commonwealth and New South Wales State. But New South Wales EPA are the lead agency regarding that, that PFAS task force.
But you're here for Hunter Water?
Correct.
So just in terms of the groundwater, do you have authority over that, or you don't, because it's within the Williamtown area, just to be clear?
We don't, no, we don't have, we don't have authority over the groundwater. Our role is with respect to harvesting that groundwater for drinking water purposes. So we share our, the monitoring we do, and obviously the knowledge we have regarding the behaviour of the aquifer, and have had input into providing advice to the PFAS task force. But we don't have any responsibility with respect to the broader management of groundwater in that area.
And so there were concerns raised by residents earlier regarding what they saw as quite a bit of foam in their residential area on, I think Dawson's Drain, they live near there. Foam that has been accumulating foam on the golf course.
Yep.
Pacific dunes. Are you aware of that kind of complaint by them and that evidence? And what's your response to that?
Uh, we are, we are aware, and they have written to us previously with respect to, to that, to those issues. Our, certainly, I can provide a general response. I'm also conscious that some of those claims do result, do relate to private property. So we're happy to provide a detailed submission in relation to that. And obviously suggest to the committee, some of that may, for your consideration, be dealt within camera, given it does deal with private property. But in general, our response to that is from a, from a, a drinking water perspective and our understanding of contamination in the Tomago Sandbeds. We have a very good understanding of how groundwater is moving, and we do extensive testing. And we are confident that the issue that is being raised is not a concern with respect to our drinking water source. And as I said, the knowledge we have of groundwater flows and the extensive testing we do demonstrates that. So for example, the bore station that is closest to that potential incident that has been raised, we have, we, we do test that, and we have not tested PFAS in that bore. With respect to the, the incident itself, we have done, based upon the most recent correspondence that we received, we did some further research to understand what we knew about that. So we did find some archival footage, news footage of a tanker accident in that area, and we've referred that on to the EPA to, to investigate, to, to consider as part of their management of, you know, contaminated sites.
I'll just have one last question before I go to other members at this stage. But you did mention as well the PFAS, the NEMP 3.0 at the federal level in terms of biosolids.
Yes.
Is this a concern for Hunter Water in terms of the application of your biosolids on, for example, agricultural land, once that comes into force?
Yeah, we've been working on a business case to make sure we are prepared for the introduction of the revised guidelines, which I understand are very much aligned with the NEMP 3.0. We've been engaging closely with the EPA to understand what those implications are. We have in the order of about $500 million in investment coming up over the coming years to be prepared to meet those guideline or the new guideline values. We're also looking at interim measures that we can put in place in the short to medium term to reduce the risk and ensure that we can play with those new guidelines.
And how much of your biosolids in terms of testing do you think at this point wouldn't be able to be applied as fertilizer on agricultural land because it exceeds the, the proposed guidelines?
So based on our analysis, we think about 25% of our current biosolids may not meet the new guidelines.
Okay, I'll come back to that. Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
Oh, so you, you mentioned the testing on the bore, one of the bores that you've got embargoed has no, has not been tested for, sorry, hasn't shown results of PFAS in it?
Correct.
You still have embargoed that though, because if you draw water out of that, so this is a question, even though it's, if you draw water out of that, you worry that groundwater will then seep into that bore.
There, there, there is that risk.
Is that, is that why that's embargoed?
Uh, yes.
There was comments from that earlier, the early evidence we heard that, I think they said Hunter Water was doing tests around that area that they weren't sure the results of. Do you have specific testing areas that you do, and that's all you test? Or are you exploring other areas with your testing?
No. So we, we are testing our bores. So just to, very briefly, you know, the Tomago Sandbeds is a large area. So it's 100 square kilometres. We have over 500 bores that are fairly major pieces of infrastructure. So they're then linked up to a large pump. So we have bore lines that might go for hundreds of metres. And we're testing those bores as, because it's as it relates to water supply. So that's the testing that we do. Our bores are, you know, varies, but roughly drawing water between 12 and 15 metres below the surface. So our bores are not necessarily representative of what a private resident would be testing. And we're, we're not out there testing private bores. That's not our, you know, we're, we're there, as I said, our role is drinking water supply, and we're testing for that reason. I should also flag, just very briefly, the Tomago Sandbeds, they're a very critical water supply for us, but we don't run them all the time. And that's because the water that's in there is, is more expensive to treat than surface water because of the geology of the sand beds. And so when we have our dams at high levels like they are at the moment, we don't run the Tomago Sandbeds. So they're not run all the time either. So we, we test as part of an operational response of ensuring water is safe and also how we manage our bore field.
What are the trends and or changes in the results you're getting through over time?
The movement of groundwater and the movement of the contaminant plume is relatively slow. And so, and relatively well understood, not slow and so, and relatively well understood, not perfectly. So we do know that we've got confidence that things will not change quickly with respect to groundwater flow. And that's only from our PFAS monitoring, but the other monitoring of chemicals within the sand beds. We are not, the main contaminant plume moving off the RAF base with the embargoes we've got in place and the management we have in place, management project operating our bores, we are confident we're not going to draw that into our bores and that we're also not going to accelerate the movement of that plume off the base. So those were the two considerations that we had with respect to operating our bore fields.
So on the individual bores, are there trends, is it increasing, decreasing the level of PFAS in those bore?
Look, generally, no, there's not an increase in PFAS in those bores. One of the challenges, and I'll reflect a little bit on the previous, the comment from the previous presenter, we are trying to find areas of PFAS contamination and manage them. It is also, it is also a very widely used chemical and we can detect it at very low concentrations. And so getting a detect, we have had examples of detects where it can't be explained. And no matter how hard we look and find, we can't explain the detection. And then we do follow up sampling and it's not there anymore. So, but as a trend, no, we're not seeing increasing PFAS concentrations in our bores.
So with the safe water levels you refer to, safe PFAS levels you refer to now, are you confident that water will still be safe in five, 10, 20 years' time?
Look, we are confident based on what we currently know, but that's why we continue to test. I mean, we're obviously open to, you know, ensuring that that remains the case and we have to do that through testing.
Mrs. Midron.
In your opening statement, you said, I think you rate the water users for the pay, the pay, can you just clarify what you said about charging the constituents or consumers of water in the local area?
Apologies, I didn't, so not so much the local area, but so all of the costs of running our business, including our PFAS monitoring, are covered by our customers. But it's our entire customer base, not just the Williamtown residents. No, I should, so the other thing I was referring to was the reticulation scheme that was provided to the residents of Williamtown. So prior to, yeah, 2016, when the announcement was made, most of those properties, so our larger residential properties, did not have a water connection to Hunter Water's service. They were using groundwater predominantly. That cost was met by the Commonwealth, initially funded by the state government and then met by the Commonwealth.
And so based on that, is that enough revenue or should you be, or is there any other, say, further government support in, so that you could manage the PFAS?
That's a much broader question that goes to IPART and the state government itself. I think, look, the areas of, as my colleague outlined, bio solids management in particular will be a challenge and based upon our current understanding will require substantial investment. And the way we are, yeah, the way that we operate as a business, the presumption is that those costs are recovered from our customers, from that, from the community that we service. So that's a broader policy question for government to consider.
And so your long-term strategy, is it to remove PFAS or to manage PFAS?
The long-term strategy for us is to ensure that our drinking water is safe and that our wastewater systems operate in a way that ensures it protects the environment and protects human health. So it's going to be, we will rely, we will take the best understanding of the science and then develop a strategy that does that in the most reliable way and then at the least cost. We need to make sure it's safe, but of course, we also do need to, you know, there is limited resources, so we need to be mindful of how we provide that safety in the most efficient way.
And on the actions that you've taken to protect the community, do you think that they are, those actions are transferable to other areas that may have to deal with PFAS contamination in the future? So the lessons you've learned, can they be passed on or is each site in, you know, I mean, I understand that, you know, different soils and things like that, but there would be some things that you could say that this is the ground rules?
Look, I think that's true and certainly as water businesses, we do look at what each other's doing and try and learn from each other. And certainly from a technical perspective, that's definitely true. I would say we, the focus we've had on PFAS clearly has been because of the particular situation at RAF Williamtown with a very high, you know, a very clear known source of very high contamination. So that has informed how we've responded. And that is different to what others have been confronted with.
Thank you. I'll just go to government members.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth, for coming along with the detailed explanation provided. In the whole of government submission, and I won't take you to it, excuse me, it's not Missouri, it's submission 19, there's a section that deals with community engagement as an important issue. I'm wondering, given, and you're quite right, so 2015, when had the first real manifestation of the issue, that had all the attention that it got and deservedly so, through to 2025, we've got a 10-year period now to sort of look back on. I'm wondering, could you just provide an overview of the community engagement that Hunter Waters consciously engaged in over that period to educate, inform, explain to the community at large, the issue and things like the website and where information's available? That would be, I think, useful evidence for the committee.
Indeed. The Williamtown issue in particular was, there was quite rarely a community that was particularly concerned and affected and with a low degree of trust in institutions because of the experience that they had with the announcement of, I think, contamination. So we spent a lot of time with our state government colleagues, particularly New South Wales EPA and New South Wales Health, going to community, you know, open days, events, responding to questions with respect to the understanding of how the sand beds operates, the hydrology of the sand beds, the testing we were doing. And that was evolving and emerging. So I suppose the key lesson for us was engaging with the local community, being open with them, providing the time to answer their questions, being clear about what we did and didn't know. Because it was, was still evolving, it was evolving at that point in time. Once we had a, so the beginning of that process, there wasn't, there was no drinking water guideline. There was no environmental guideline with respect to PFAS. So part of the challenge was, even with testing, if we found something, we couldn't tell people what it meant. And that in itself is a very big challenge. Once we had the guideline, then we did do a broad, we implemented our sampling program across our entire drinking water network and made the summary of those results available to our customers. So we could be transparent. And we then, when we had queries, we could engage and say, well, here is the information we have and then have some dialogue with respect to.
A very comprehensive approach to trying to, at least in part, rebuild what might have been a bit of a deficit in public trust about matters of water. So that was very high in your mind in terms of the work you were laying out?
That's right. And it was also, it was the testing along with the explanation of, and this was more with particular stakeholder groups, how did the system work? And so why are we confident, for example, that the groundwater from RAF Williamtown isn't draining into Grahamstown Dam was one of the common questions we were.
Yeah.
So it was a combination of all of that. And we did, we have had provided information with respect to all of that, some total of knowledge and getting our experts who have that understanding to engage with the community to answer their questions.
And that's a continuing exercise? It's not one that's terminated? I mean, the issue is still obviously in the public domain, it's still continuing?
It's a continuing exercise, but I think it's in recent years until very recent times, it's one that has, within our community, from our experience, had less prominence.
Right, yes.
So it's compared to the earlier days of 2016.
Of course, of course, yeah.
More broadly, we do obviously publicise our PFAS results in our drinking water and we've got a range of information and fact sheets available on our website that we refer our community to as well if they want to learn more.
Thank you. That's helpful evidence, thank you.
Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you do in terms of the safety of the drinking water. I think that's great. And I just wanted to turn to the issue of wastewater. You're responsible for that also. What steps are in place to remediate that wastewater test, to look at PFAS contamination in that now and into the future?
I think, so we are testing and our focus at the moment is on our controls of what's being discharged into our wastewater network. So particularly looking at commercially industrial customers that potentially have high concentrations of PFAS. And we've been working with them for a while to stop that discharge. So with residential, no, that's basically, it's very, very challenging. We can't control that.
Carpet, clothing.
Well, that's right. And our customers can't control it. They can't, they can't. That's where that, my opening statement referred to, absolutely the approach of trying to minimise the use of PFAS in products is.
Sure, but that can't be the only approach. I mean.
No, so we are.
At some stage for you to test that and to remediate the water before you put it out to.
Well, we are testing.
Sea or somewhere else.
We get very, so we do at times often get no detects and we have, we do get examples of detections of PFAS. So this is where it comes back to then certainly working with the New South Wales EPA and getting expert advice about, well, what is a safe concentration? What is a safe limit that we can then work out a management strategy to meet?
And what is that at the moment? What do you consider a safe limit in terms of wastewater?
So we're being guided by the NIM. So there is not, there is not clear guidance at this point in time. So we are doing, we are testing. As I said, much of our wastewater has no detects, at times it does. So we, it's an area that is still emerging.
But there's no standard that you're applying to it at all at the moment?
There's a proposed standard.
Yes, correct. And we are assessing our bio solids and wastewater.
Against that standard?
Against that standard, yes, that's right.
So that's the bio solids, not the, so there's the bio solids and then there's also, there's also the wastewater discharge. So the contrast we're finding is very low. And so our understanding is we don't think that presents a significant risk, but the science is still, the science is still emerging. So that's something we're monitoring closely.
There are concerns though, are there not, in terms of bio solids? The Australia, New Zealand, what's it called, Bio solids, what's that organisation?
Biosolids partnership.
They're worried about the NEMP 3. They're quite concerned about the potential on the bio solids industry and the reuse of bio solids, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And so what are they saying about it? What, why are they concerned?
Well, the new NEMP 3.0 introduces guidelines around PFAS values, which the current guidelines do not, it's silent on PFAS. So this is a big step change for the industry. So yes, there are concerns, as Darren said, it is an evolving science and we need to be able to understand what are the actual implications for human health. I suspect there's also concerns, and there are certainly in the broader water industry, about the cost implications of complying with those new guidelines as well in the most cost-effective way.
So what are your options with bio solids then? If these new guidelines do come into force, which it appears as though they will, you said potentially 25%, was that like unrestricted use or restricted use on agricultural land couldn't be used, 25% of your bio solids?
Yeah, so we, our bio solids are used across a range of different end users around agricultural for non-dairy, around 10% we think is used on agricultural for dairy. Some of it is also composted for further use around land rehabilitation, land rehabilitation. So yes, to, our estimation is that around 25% of our bio solids will not meet the minimum threshold that are currently being discussed in the new or the emerging guidelines, New South Wales bio solids.
What are your options for, how much is that, by the way, 25%? How many tonnes are we talking?
We produce annually in the order of 40,000 to 50,000 wet tonnes of bio solids each year.
And so what are your treatment or disposal options?
So we're looking at long-term options in terms of treatment technologies that will address PFAS as well as the other range of contaminants that the new bio solids guidelines will address. As I mentioned before, we are also looking at interim measures to reduce the risk and comply with the new guidelines. So there'll be measures like operational measures, so blending for example, or doing more composting of bio solids that don't meet those standards. We could put in more temporary storage so that we can, you know, enable us to store bio solids for longer, to enable us to blend and to compost. Longer term, to treat the PFAS or remove the PFAS, we're looking at new technology. So it'll take some time to develop a business case then, like deliver significant infrastructure requirements.
I suppose the ultimate, so it also depends upon the nature of the guidelines and understanding the risk. And the detailed risk assessments, we understand the guidelines, you know, will provide guidance on and it's something we'll need to understand because if the risk isn't acceptable, then we won't apply bio solids to land. And then our options are either to store, which is, you know, from a practical perspective, you know, for so long, and then put into landfill. So there is a, there is a very large challenge for us if those guidelines were to demonstrate. And if they are, then we've got to follow the public health advice, we absolutely would, that bio solids application, you know, wasn't acceptable under those circumstances, then they would be our options that we'd have to, we'd have to continue to work through. Because the development of treatment technology to remove is, you know, it's a large investment that will take time to deliver. Not about the cost is the cost, but that sort of technology is not something you can deliver quickly. It takes years of procurement and construction to implement that sort of technology.
Is Hunter Water trialling anything at this point in time?
We're engaged with a lot, bunch of research around much of this technology, both from a, an understanding of the mechanisms of bio, of transport of PFAS potentially out of bio solids. So the research, the professor and I do mention before, we're one of the partners as part of that research, for example, as well as partnering with other organisations within the industry, just look at what technologies are available and looking at that closely. From our perspective, from a scale perspective, that sort of research about technology is very expensive. And so to do that cost effectively, we partner. You know, we don't really have the financial capacity to do that on it by ourselves, given our scale.
The other research that the committee may be interested in is looking at the effectiveness of bio solids biochar, which Dr. Nadu did mention. So we're also contributing to research in that area to understand the fate of chemicals or contaminants in the biochar and also understand what are the end uses for biochar. So at the moment, there isn't an end market for biochar, but that doesn't mean to say that there won't be in the future. So we need to understand those risks as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from members?
I just did have one about the infrastructure, so the pipes and pumps and that sort of stuff. If all of a sudden there was a source that had no PFAS in it and it was then pumped through that infrastructure, would there still be remnants in that infrastructure for going forward?
It's, it's possible that PFAS could accumulate in, if we have sediment within our pipes, that does happen in various spots, it's possible that PFAS could accumulate in that. But in the, so in the wastewater system, in the water system, you know, we're not detecting any significant source of PFAS whatsoever. Most of the detections are nil, so I think the risk of that is negligible. In the wastewater system, it is possible, but that's, you know, it's unlikely to be at very high concentrations and that's why that source control is really essential.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members?
That's very good evidence, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thanks so much for appearing.
Thank you.
The secretary will be in touch if you've agreed to take any notice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any outbreak from morning tea, we'll be back at 11.45.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, welcome back to our next session with Hunter New England Local Health District. We'll start by swearing you in, Dr. Merritt. So if you could state your name and position title please, and then either an oath or affirmation.
Thank you, Dr. Tony Merritt, public health physician with Hunter New England Population Health. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thanks very much. Now, do you have an opening statement for the committee?
I do, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to make a brief opening statement. I'd like to start by recognising the traditional custodians of the lands and waters throughout Hunter New England Local Health District and to acknowledge everyone. and to acknowledge Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island elders past and present. I'm a public health physician and I've worked with the Public Health Unit in Hunter New England for over two decades. I've contributed to Public Health Unit engagement with PFAS issues since 2015. And in addition to Williamtown, there've been a range of other sites impacted by PFAS in Hunter New England over this period. In terms of our roles, the Public Health Unit has a key role in supporting and informing local communities about public health risks and how these can be mitigated. We have, for example, participated in many community drop in sessions in Williamtown. And the local health district provided a dedicated mental health service to that community when this was recognised as a significant need early in the response. It's important to note that decisions on policy are made at the state or federal level or through expert scientific panels such as the NHMRC. And the Public Health Unit plays a specific role in then communicating these decisions at a local level. We've also been active in supporting and educating local clinicians. This was particularly critical in the early response to PFAS in the Williamtown community. We ran multiple sessions for local general practitioners and continue to provide updated information through the local primary health network. We also support local government authorities throughout Hunter New England who are responsible for the provision of safe drinking water. We do this by providing technical advice if there are PFAS or other chemical or microbiological detections, by facilitating engagement with appropriate government agencies and through assisting with developing clear messaging to keep the community informed if PFAS are other chemical or microbiological risks exceeding drinking water guidelines are detected. And we also work with other government agencies as required when they're involved in PFAS related work in the local health district. I look forward to your questions and I hope that I can make a useful contribution to the inquiry. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr Merritt. And you said you've been involved, what, in the PFAS issue, working on PFAS since 2015?
Indeed, yep. So that's right.
Yeah, and so you were part of, you were involved locally in terms of Williamtown?
Yep, I was at that first multi-agency meeting in August 2015 where that was initially dealing with the discovery of PFAS off the site at Williamtown. So yes, I've been involved with, with the team. There's a group of public health physicians, my director is one as well. So there's a group of us who have been involved with both Williamtown and PFAS throughout Hunter New England since that time.
And what, what knowledge does New South Wales Health have in relation to the health, potential health impacts of PFAS on Williamtown residents? Yeah, I'll start with that question for now.
Sure. So this is a specific question about health impacts in Williamtown? Yep, surely. All right. So look, we, we had really extensive involvement with the Williamtown community through those community liaison meetings, the drop in centres. So we had a lot of first hand experience with how PFAS was affecting and impacting residents in the community. I guess the, the most detailed study that we can draw on in terms of science around the health impacts was done by the Australian National University. And that reinforced our, our own impression, so we could talk about that at length. But I guess the headline findings there were around the psychological distress. So that really significant finding, and that was borne out by our experience with community members at those early drop in centres. And the, the ANU study looked at levels of PFAS in blood samples. They looked at people's exposure histories and they looked at data linkage with health outcomes across a broad range of things. So one of the, in addition to that psychological distress, they noted an increase in cholesterol levels in Williamtown residents. I might hasten to add that the, the ANU study was across three sites that increased its power involving more people. So it was Williamtown, it was Oki and Catherine. And so the, the most powerful conclusions drew on the data from across all of those populations. So there was the issue identified with cholesterol. They went on to note that those elevations were statistically significant but modest in size and perhaps unlikely to have a significant clinical impact. And there was no strong conclusions drawn about other health issues that were strongly delineated across those three populations. But they looked widely and I can talk more generally about health concerns, of course. But they're the kind of headline findings from the ANU report.
So yeah, that's the ANU. So what does New South Wales Health do in terms of baseline studies within the community now? So Hunter New England in terms of Williamtown residents, their health issues. And I'll also ask about blood tests here as well. I know Department of Defence does that, I think, but whether New South Wales Health is. And are there any studies that, that, that's looking at what's happening with the, with Williamtown residents on a broad level, health wise, since 2015?
Oh, beg your pardon. You know, in terms of that kind of research oriented cross section across the community, we've relied on that ANU investigation that was done in enormous detail. It was involved data linkage, involved a bigger population as well, drawing on those other bases. And they also had capacity to have comparison populations. So other communities similar size but not exposed to PFAS, which allowed them to, to bring that comparison lens to the experience of Williamtown residents. So we've relied on, on that work in terms of the, the best picture available of impact PFAS on Williamtown residents.
When was that done?
Well, I'd have to refer back. So it's a couple of years ago now.
I've got, I've, I've got that in front of me. So New South Wales Health hasn't undertaken its own, even though the ANU, the ANU study did acknowledge that there, you know, some of the limitations of that study were this kind of small size and unable to measure the Williamtown residents against the general population. Wouldn't it make sense, I think, for Hunter New England to do, look at some of that work?
So the, the power's an important issue, as you point to. And so they had the capacity to include the, the two other communities. And that was both to get a, a realistic look at other communities known to be impacted by PFAS, but to increase the power, their capacity to pick up effects should they be there. So that was part of the advantage of relying on that ANU work indeed to address that.
But this was just in PFAS affected communities?
That's correct.
Catherine, Oki and Williamtown.
That's right, yep.
So New South Wales Health is not curious as to how the Williamtown residents are comparing against residents in other parts of the Hunter?
Like I say, we've relied on, on that detailed study to address that particular question.
That doesn't do that though, with respect, Dr Merritt, does it?
Could you restart your question then?
So that, in terms of comparing the PFAS affected communities in Williamtown compared to the rest of the population in the Hunter?
Okay, I, I guess what they did do for the ANU study was compare the Williamtown community with a, a, a comparison community. I would have to go back to the study to be reminded where that comparison community was. But that goes to the heart of your question, I think, and that is to, to pick up whether there were significant differences between Williamtown and a, an, an otherwise similar community that didn't have exposure to higher levels of PFAS.
Are you aware of how that's tracking over time? How, how that Williamtown, the PFAS affected community in Williamtown? Is New South Wales Health aware of how they're tracking? Since the ANU study?
So I'm, I'm not aware of any comparable follow up work with that community.
You're not aware of, you can't remember when this was done?
I've got the report here. I can pull it out if you like, but do.
It's not a trick question. I'm trying to find.
No, no, no.
2021, I think the research was done in, it might have been presented in early 2022.
That, that sounds, sounds reasonable to me. So no, I'm not, I'm not aware of follow up work of this nature, this kind of detailed research oriented comparison since that time.
Dr Merritt, what's, what's your view on the, no, sorry, I'll start again. The NHMRC's Australian Drinking Water Guidelines came out in February this year, January this year? The, the draft drinking water guidelines?
Oh, I think we're talking about 2024.
Yes, no, the end of last year.
October, I believe, 2024?
Yes. You're aware of the IARC's findings in relation to PFOA and PFOA?
I am. Well, they're, that's correct. They've made an announcement, they've found PFOA to be carcinogenic and PFOs to be possibly carcinogenic. I think that's the findings you're referring to.
But yes, and none of our kind of guidelines at this point are referring to that. Is that correct, that, that the latest national, I think the NHMRC?
Oh, I, I think, so this is, we're getting into technical territory in relation to NHMRC, but I'm happy to comment on it generally. So the NHMRC, peak national body, experts who provide us with the guidance in the Australian Drinking Water Guidelines, guidelines amongst other things, as you refer to, there's an established, the current Australian Drinking Water Guidelines. And then towards the end of last year, as I say, with October, they announced a proposed revision to those guidelines based on a renewed look at the evidence. So those are living documents and they get updated from time to time in the light of other evidence. I've looked at the documents that NHMRC released accompanying those proposed guidelines. They, they make specific reference and acknowledge the, the IARC findings in relation to PFOA and PFOs. They note that they weight the detailed monographs that will provide the, the background thinking in terms of both of those things. So yeah, I think, to your earlier question, if I've understood correctly, Chair, NHMRC in releasing their proposed documents were aware of IARC's findings and as I say, await the, the detailed content that is behind those.
Hmm, okay. Wait that. Do you have any thoughts as to why we at the Australian level in terms of drinking water guidelines? Why we would suggest that PFOA, a, a, a limit of 200 parts per trillion would be acceptable when, for example, the US EPA has four parts per trillion? I've seen some of the justification for that is different circumstances. I was just wondering, you as somebody that works within the LHD, the Hunter New England LHD, whether you'd be conscious of what those circumstantial differences are between us and the US to warrant a, a different standard?
Yeah, I think with respect, I'm going to need to refer questions about that kind of policy and more detailed technical, technical consideration to my health and other agency colleagues. So that, that's not a consideration at the local health district. But I do know that there's a different approach to border guidelines in many different agencies around the world. And so there are valid considerations and decisions to be made about how guidelines are put together and developed. And there are generally, generally different approaches in different jurisdictions. But, but I'll leave the comment on the more technical aspects if, if that's acceptable to my, my colleagues at the state level.
Okay, I'll come back to that. Questions from the opposition? Do you have questions? Mrs McDonald?
And you might have to take it on notice. What are the long term effects or health risks of exposure to PFAS chemicals?
Yeah, so it's fabulous and important question, isn't it, in terms of the health and what's, what's driving all this? And so clearly the PFAS group of chemicals of concern. We've heard repeatedly that they're very long lasting, they bi accumulate. Those are characteristics which are concerning. And then there's the health concerns layered on top. I'm sure the committee has had the NHEALTH summary document fact sheet presented and that's the kind of succinct two page summary which captures health concerns, I think, really helpfully. And so I'm happy to enter that into evidence if you'd like, but I suspect you've had that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put it on.
You've had it repeatedly. And so there are health concerns, so in terms of things like cholesterol, we've mentioned, but uric acid and thyroid hormones, kidney hormones, those kind of issues, where those, where those changes have been found, they've often been at modest levels and the extent to which they have any biological consequence is uncertain. Importantly, we've touched on the issue of concerns around cancer. And, and so I'd point out that, that so those findings from IARC are really important, of course. Links with or concerns about two rare types of cancers. So that's testicular cancer and kidney cancer. And that's particularly with one of those two chemicals with the PFOA and particularly in, in high exposure settings, industrial settings, for example, overseas. And, and in Australia, and certainly in Hunter New England, I'll confine my comments to that. It's more generally the PFO, PFOs that we've had excesses of. And, and in terms of, so your question was long term consequences? And it really goes to that aggregate kind of consideration about potential health impacts. And we continue to learn more about these chemicals, but I'd point you to that. NHEALTH summary is a fabulous kind of succinct status of, you know, that's the peak body in, in Australia. Summarising the evidence as they had it then, that's a living document as well. They'll update it, of course, as new evidence comes to light.
So in your current role, do you have the capacity to, I guess, advise New South Wales Health to update their public health guidelines in line with international standards based on what you've just said?
Right.
Just in your role, I'm not.
Sure. No, that, that kind of policy, regulation, development level, that, that happens amongst my peers at the, at the New South Wales Government level. Not, not at a local health district level where I operate and you've got a sense of the kind of things we get involved in through my opening statement.
How, thank you, Dr Merritt. How do I filter between the, the list of, I guess, problems that the PFAS is causing through to the, the line in the thing where there's no causative relationship between health facts, health effect, sorry, between health effects and PFAS exposure? How do I equate those two statements?
Yeah, so I think the language is very scientific and it's careful and it's accurate. And so there is an important kind of, kind of leap in understanding there, I guess. So the concerns relate to associations with that list of things, for example, the cholesterol. And so a chemical exposure might be associated in studies with an outcome like cholesterol without it being a clear causal pathway. It may be there were other things going on in that population group that explained the cholesterol being raised, for example. And so we see the, look, we, we, it's entirely appropriate that a precautionary approach is taken to PFAS and that's what drives this committee's interest. It's, it's what drives our public health action in terms of helping keeping communities safe in terms of the underlying health evidence. The, the summary from NHEALTH, I think, accurately reflects that. There's associations that we need to consider in terms of them being causatively established. That evidence is naughty. In terms of cancer, high level concerns, you've got IARC declaring PFOA as a carcinogen. That's critically important, drives the precautionary principle in terms of moving that down. But as the NHEALTH statement says, I think you've got it in front of you, you were just calling it, you know, studies of these cancers remain conflicting and associations have only been observed in high exposure groups such as workers in international factories where PFO is produced. So it'll be really important to have a very careful look at how, when, when the full monographs are available from, from IARC, how that information applies most appropriately to Australian setting.
Dr Merritt, what were you just reading from?
Oh, I do apologise. So we've just referred to the NHEALTH fact sheet multiple times. So I, I believe.
I personally don't have it in front of me. But so, so as a medical professional, you're comfortable with that? That's what I read is contradictory language?
Okay, so I, I don't think it is contradictory, so we can have association. So I am comfortable to, to go to your question. And so I, I start and finish with a precautionary approach, given all those health concerns, absolutely. The associations are there, higher cholesterol, for example, in the Williamtown population. Need to take that seriously. But there may be other factors contributing to the, the associations that have been seen.
And what would change if this causative relationship was established?
Well, I think the precautionary approach that's been taken takes that absolutely into account. So, you know, the, the driving practice behind the application of that principle has been to establish safety of drinking water supplies and ensure levels are at, at a standard that the national body in Australia, NHMRC, sees as protective over a lifetime. And so it would be to ensure people's exposure is, to water in particular, that it was safe for drinking. That wouldn't change at all because in terms of the things we've just been talking about, the current approach takes that into account and is protective. So the guidance, for example, that NHMRC produces for the Australian Drinking Water Guidelines, that's designed, you know, if water complies with those guidelines, it's assessed as safe for a person's whole lifetime. So that's exposure over an entire lifetime with no health impacts expected if the levels remain below the guidance level. So, and it's, yeah. So have I answered your question?
Thank you.
Thanks. Questions from the government? Mr. Murphy?
Thanks, Chair, and thank you, Dr. Merrett. What you've outlined really is just a, it's a risk-based approach, isn't it? Where it's about reducing exposure, following those national guidelines, and then as more knowledge comes to light, the guidelines change. What we've seen over time is the level of exposure that's tolerable is just reducing. Why wouldn't we be taking more steps to, for example, ban materials that contain the PFAS group of chemicals from being sold or used, for example? Do you think we're at the point where something like that should be considered?
It's a little bit beyond where I work in a local health district, but I am aware that there are all sorts of measures at an international and state level to do exactly the kind of things that you're talking about and reduce the flow of PFAS-containing items into use in New South Wales. And that's part of the picture. That's not something I deal with day to day. But reducing PFAS in our day-to-day environment, I get involved in safety of water, but in terms of all the other pathways you've heard about this morning, you know, treatment of fabrics, food wrappings and so forth.
Is this one of the areas from which it bends up in water, from cosmetics, from carpet, from all of these other products, cooking, non-stick pans, implements that are used and things like that?
My old bushwalking jacket.
And how would you compare the approach we've taken to this group of chemicals to other things that pose a risk to human health? Where, in the same way as we've just talked about, we don't necessarily have the exact science to determine that this particular cancer is caused by, you know, that chemical. And when the linkages aren't there, what do we do in other situations where there's a potential risk to public health?
Look, some of those regulatory questions will be best addressed to my state colleagues tomorrow. But as I say, I point to measures that are underway internationally, nationally and at a state level to reduce PFAS-containing items being used in New South Wales and in Hunter New England. And there are analogous approaches, you know, from a safety perspective in relation to other toxic items over time.
Doctor, thank you very much for coming today and appreciate all the work you've done in this area, very significant for this region, particularly bearing in mind, I think, from your opening statement that around 2015, that's when you started to be drawn into this particularly in light of the Williamtown revelation. My question goes to the matter of, what, so the experience or insights you've gathered in your permanent role here in the local health district dealing with this matter. In terms of communication to the public at large and engagement to endeavour to explain something quite complex and scientifically nuanced, to enable that communication to provide the best insights for people without overwhelming them with technical detail, which otherwise would just create a sort of a whole cloud over the whole thing. So how you've gone about that?
Well, it's a really broad question and it's obviously really important. I guess from a one-to-one basis at those early Williamtown drop-in centres, we had a lot of experience dealing with people across a broad section. As you say, some people wanted a lot of detailed information. There's some incredible community scientists in the Williamtown area and we appreciate greatly. And there are some people who just wanted a simple headline message. So clearly, there's the importance of talking with people one-on-one. There's the importance of making information that's readily intelligible, available on the website. Some of that's on New South Wales Health, some of it's on other agencies such as New South Wales EPA. I mentioned in my opening statement, we did a lot of work with clinicians locally. So the local GPs are really important point of trust information for people who might be considering what potential health impacts there might be. So that's historically been really important in Williamtown and elsewhere. And we continue the flow of information through to GPs. Might mention just one other example. So our work with local water utilities in Hunter New England, you know, working under the management of local councils. Now, they have a responsibility for communicating water safety issues through to their community. And so we have a very proactive role supporting councils with developing and disseminating their information materials out to communities in local councils in more rural parts of Hunter New England.
My next question really follows on about if one could describe it standing above and looking what's played out in this region since 2015. And listen, if you feel it, it's not within your remit to answer this particular question, please indicate it. But what government at large can learn from the experience that's been played out here, given quite significant announcement back in 2015 and the ongoing tail, this has got a long tail and no doubt has got further playing out into the future? Other than the communication, which I presume you endorse, still needs to be looked to see how that can be refined and done on an ongoing basis. Any other matters we should pay particular attention to, do you think?
Look, I would be, coming back to first principles here, I think in terms of kind of specific broader approach at a New South Wales level, New South Wales Government level, I'll leave that for your discussions with colleagues tomorrow.
In the context of this region then particularly?
Yeah, but I think you've pointed to communication and building trust is critical. So it's the kind of detailed investigation and understanding involving critical community members who are interested and credible flow of information to build trust with ongoing communication. They're kind of key pillars of any response of this sort. And they're all certainly seem to be key elements in responding to PFAS in Hunter New England.
Just on communication, before I pass back to the chair, going back to where I started. Were there challenges experienced in, I sort of use the word untangling, some of what I might describe as, I'll say this cautiously but carefully, exaggerated claims or unfounded claims that may have been made at the time when this all came to pass? Or is that factored into something which is understandable when something like this happens? In terms of managing this?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think, I think we started with a lot of unknowns back in 2015. It was new for us to be responding to. So there was a huge amount that we didn't know. The learning curve, I think for all agencies involved was very steep.
Much as we learned from this experience?
Yeah, and obviously incredibly steep for the Williamtown community there too. And as I say, there's some extraordinarily well-informed community members who've travelled internationally and have, you know, really detailed understanding of these issues at an international level.
Worked through these matters.
So I'm not sure about exaggerated claims, but, you know, there was a lot of unknowns early on and that needed to be acknowledged and fed into. And we've alluded already to the really high levels of psychological distress and they came from many things. And, but we saw that firsthand with contact with Williamtown people who'd come to the area for a significant change and their lifestyle was dramatically changed overnight in terms of restrictions on what they could do.
The communication went around and around to sort of feedback, further answers to questions, feedback.
Yeah, sure. So it is indeed an iterative process. And if people flag concerns with us, then very often that's entirely appropriate for us to explore those, understand what the substance is and address that as best we can.
Thanks, Doctor.
All right. I just wanted to, I've got like an email here that you did write in April, this, April last year, not April this year, April last year, I got a lot of documents returned in the parliament on PFAS and there's a lot from New South Wales Health. There's a fair few documents from New South Wales Health in relation to the PFAS fact sheet. In April last year, you wrote an email suggesting that the New South Wales Health PFAS fact sheet that stated, that was dated at the time, April 2017, could benefit from an update. And what you wanted to draw the attention of two people, Stephen and Christian, draw their attention to the fact that does exposure to PFAS cause cancer? You put underneath that, this could be updated to incorporate the IARC decision late in 2023 to list PFOA as Group One carcinogenic and PFOS as Group Two B, possibly carcinogenic. Shortly after that, the PFAS, New South Wales PFAS Health Fact Sheet was removed and all references now at the federal, which, to be honest, talks down any connection to cancer with the causality that you were just stating. But in April, you did seem concerned that the New South Wales PFAS Fact Sheet didn't specifically reference the fact that it, that PFOA is carcinogenic according to the IARC.
Yep, and that reflects what we're alluding to, you know, unknowns, developing information and lots of these documents being living documents that need to be updated with new information. So my recollection is that, oh, I think you've just mentioned that the New South Wales Health Fact Sheet, which had been invaluable in our early work.
Doctor, you're familiar precisely with this letter that's being referred to? Because if not, it's fair to share that with the.
Oh, that's fine. That rings true. I wouldn't have been able to give you the date, but certainly that rings true. So I recognise that as a very brief email I'd sent to colleagues at a New South Wales level. So the original fact sheet, which was enormously helpful, but I think dated 2017, which is implied by my, you know, so by the time I was writing this email, it many years had passed, there's lots more information. And the key issue that wasn't adequately addressed in the original fact sheet related to the new IARC findings. So very appropriate that either the New South Wales Health Fact Sheet incorporate that or be replaced by a national fact sheet. Fully supportive of using an N Health fact sheet that represents the same advice to all states and territories in Australia. So I understand that was the decision made at the time.
Like the N Health fact sheet, I think I've got a slightly longer one than the one you have. But does it mention that PFOA is listed as carcinogenic by the International Agency for Research on Cancer, that organisation, IARC? And does it say that PFOS is potentially carcinogenic? Because I don't think it does. But you were very keen to see the New South Wales Health PFAS Fact Sheet mention that back in April last year.
So the gist of my email was that the 2017 fact sheet didn't have adequate mention of the updated information about cancer and those two things.
Good on you for suggesting that.
And so that's appropriate. Look, I've got that, I'd need to be scanning here. I'm not sure that it does mention IARC, Chair.
So all this says, studies on these cancers remain conflicting and associations have only been observed in high exposure groups such as workers in international factories where PFOA is produced.
Yes.
Do you think that's enough? Do you think that adequately reflects what the international science is suggesting?
I think I know there's a, keen to see the detailed work behind the IARC documents. And this is a living document. I'm sure it will be updated in time. But it's those kind of detailed background information from IARC will be helpful.
So what was in the, from you was your, what's your population health? Is that your?
I work for Hunter New England Population Health.
And have you read the IARC, the studies behind the IARC findings, stick with PFOA at this point?
Right. No, I couldn't discuss the kind of more detailed findings with any detailed knowledge, I'm sorry.
And so I just wanted one more. If you've got the N Health thing, can you just read again? I just want to check if it's what I've got in front of me, whether there's two versions floating around. What does it say about causing cancer?
All right. So I've got a two-page N Health fact sheet, not a broader document that I printed off on the 11th of December last year. I believe that's still current. Haven't checked in the last two weeks.
We get a copy of that?
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
At the end, because you're reading from it at this point.
Yep. So I think the paragraph you're referring to, Chair, potential associations between PFAS exposure and increased risk of two uncommon cancers, namely testicular and kidney cancer, have also been reported, this evidence relates specifically to PFOA, not PFOS or PFHXS, which are more common in Australia. However, and I mentioned this earlier, so do these, of these cancers remain conflicting and associations have only been observed in high exposure groups such as workers in international factories where PFOA is produced. Does that align with the document you?
Yes.
That's what I have in front of me.
With kidney cancer, do you know how common kidney cancer is? In the general population?
It's not common, but I don't have a, an incidence rate in front of me. No, I can't help you there, sorry.
I think it's, okay, I think it's the sixth most common cancer in men in Australia. Can I ask whether there's any observations of other forms of PFAS chemicals that you have, because we've only got at this stage the Australian Drinking Water Guidelines of, for example, Gen X chemicals? Is there anything that you're looking at research-wise that we should know about in terms of Gen X chemicals?
Look, the research tends to happen in other areas, not in the population health unit where we're service delivery and in the way I outlined in my opening statement. I'm not involved. I don't think anyone in our unit's involved in any research around Gen X. So there'd be a question for technical and policy people at the state level. And I'm not aware of any flow of information about other PFAS chemicals. The ones that come across our desk relate to the drinking water guidance and the particular chemicals that are listed there. And that's bread and butter for us day in, day out with water utilities and their testing.
So within the Hunter New England LHD and say PFAS studies in particular, who works on that? Like what type of a kind of workforce do you have that is very up to date on PFAS science? Do you have a unit, for example, within the LHD that is tasked with this?
No, no. We're part of New South Wales Health and so there's a Ministry of Health team. And there is at a state level, an all-government, New South Wales PFAS expert group, supported by a technical advisory group. So in terms of kind of high-level latest science and deliberating on questions like this and policy, then we are guided by colleagues at a state level, particularly that PFAS expert panel group, for example.
Can I ask with the psychological distress that seems to be noted a lot, how much more, like in the ANU study, that was psychological stress as a result of people living in PFAS-affected communities versus the other diseases that were also shown to be slightly high compared to the rest of the population? Was psychological distress way over and above some of the other diseases?
Chair, I'm reliant on the summary report. And so the way it's presented, and I've got a copy of their extract here if you'd like me to read from it. But certainly the clearest conclusion was around psychological distress. And then good evidence of increased cholesterol with. cholesterol with much, without compelling evidence across all of the other issues that they, that they looked at. Does that go to your question?
Yes, it's just I'm noticing with this N Health fact sheet as well, it's, it makes note of the communities, people living in PFAS affected communities are more likely to experience psychological distress. This is around what evidence is there of health effects from exposure to PFAS? And it goes on, while PFAS has not definitely been shown to be a cause of disease in humans. But do you agree with that statement as well? Just disease broadly now we're getting to, not just cancer? So...
So I'm reliant on the, the scientific expertise of groups like N Health and NHMRC and, and that is indeed the conclusion that, that they come to?
Do you know who the New South Wales representative is on the NHMRC?
I don't.
From New South Wales Health?
I don't.
Do you make any, does the Hunter New England LHD make any submissions to that process?
No, no, that happens at a, a state level.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, sure. You, you spoke of the support and attention offered to Williamtown?
Yep.
Which I'm not grudging at all, but is the same support being rolled out to other communities where they're finding PFAS in their drinking water, such as Warielda, which I believe is also in your health district?
So the sport has taken different forms in different communities depending on the circumstances, which is what you'd expect. So in Warielda, we've had a lot of time supporting the local council who run the local water utility and that's taken the form again, pretty much along the lines I outlined in my opening statement in terms of supporting the testing, understanding the results, facilitating meetings with other agencies, formulating appropriate investigation and helping support them with clear communication with the community in terms of exactly what was going on.
Are you getting calls from community or communities to, to do more surveillance, more testing, blood tests and the like? We heard yesterday in the Blue Mountains that there certainly was that community sentiment, the more testing was desired? Just there, testing was desired?
Yeah, so we, I guess important distinction, but testing water or test, testing blood, okay. Look, to the best of my knowledge, when I last had an update, there was a, a single question about blood testing in the Warielda community. So yes, it had been brought up, only aware of that coming up once. And we worked with the local GPs to provide the, the background in terms of discussion around blood testing. So it, it has come up as a question now and then, not, not as a, it, it was a question was much more common in the early days of the Williamtown response. And as you know, the federal government funded and provided a blood testing program for the Williamtown community at that time and blood testing was part of the ANU research program. But your question related to more recent times and it, it comes up just now and then, it's not a, not a recurring or frequent issue in terms of calls that come to us.
Are there avenues for people to, to go down that path?
Yeah, so it's possible, is the short answer. Blood testing is, you'll be aware from previous testimony, from my perspective, it's best placed in the context of a, a research or population-wide sampling. So it was, it made sense in the ANU study, which was part of a research protocol, looking at associations across the whole population. It's been useful in community sampling to get a sense of trends in PFAS across age groups and communities over time. That's where we get that information from. It's much less useful in, in individuals and, you know, so you'll be familiar with the New South Wales Health advice that blood testing's generally not recommended for individuals and it's because it doesn't bring the kind of usefulness, utility that you would hope for out of a test, the sort of usefulness you'd expect if you went to your GP to get your cholesterol tested, for example. All of us will have PFAS in our bloods. There are not levels at which your GP could see and say, well, look, that's, represents a specific risk of some health outcome, we just don't have that information with PFAS, certainly not at the moment. So that, that sort of combination of everyone having PFAS and a lack of useful action flowing from looking at an individual person's PFAS level does mean that a blood test in individuals is, is less useful. Does, does that go to your question?
From a population health perspective though, Dr Merritt, it would be very useful, wouldn't it, to, to do studies that look at the different levels of PFAS in a certain population's blood and then their associated health. I understand there's lots of different factors. But surely that would be useful to see, oh, look, 56% of people with this much PFAS in their blood have this much higher cholesterol than, for example. That's putting it very, very, very bluntly, but from a population health perspective, wouldn't it be useful?
Well, look, and it has been useful and that's what ANU did in Williamtown, as you say, it was a few years ago. But it does need to be, I agree entirely, it needs to be in that context of a really carefully constructed research project that considers the kind of other influences that might impact somebody's cholesterol, for example, has a comparison group so that you can come to valid conclusions about what you're seeing. So it's in that context and so the, the ANU study was a really useful contribution because it addressed all of those elements.
Okay, thank you. We're out of time.
Right.
Thank you so much for appearing today. If you agree to take anything on notice, the Secretary, it will be in touch.
Sure.
Or if we've got any further supplementary questions for you. Thank you for appearing. Yes, please, and your opening statement for hand side if it hasn't already. Thank you. Right, we'll begin. Welcome our next witnesses, our final witnesses for today. So we'll begin by getting you both sworn in. So if you start with my left, Mr Gathercole, is it?
Yes, that's right, thank you. My name is David Gathercole, Director Operations, New South Wales EPA, and I say on oath, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you so much. Ms Ford.
So I'm Corrie Ford, I'm Manager Operations for New South Wales EPA, and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there an opening statement by one of you? Thanks.
Yes, please, Chair. So before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land we meet, the Uwabikaw from Lake Macquarie and here in Newcastle. It's known that their heritage and cultural ties back 10,000s of years on this land, I pay my respects to elders past and present. The regulation and management of PFAS family of chemicals is a complex and challenging issue. With this in mind, I'd like to say by providing some context on the role the New South Wales Environment Protection Authority plays in the New South Wales Government's response to PFAS contamination. In September 2015, the EPA put out a media release to notify that legacy firefighting chemicals had been discovered around Williamtown RAF Base and Newcastle Airport. Since then, the New South Wales Government has implemented a whole-of-government approach to investigate and provide the community with advice on legacy PFAS contamination. It involves taking a risk-based approach to identify potential risks using agreed national policies and standards such as the 2020 Intergovernmental Agreement on National Framework for Responding to PFAS Contamination, the Australian Drinking Water Guidelines, to name a few. When it comes to the EPA specifically, we lead the largest PFAS investigation program in the country. The program is guided by Appendix B of the PFAS National Environmental Management Plan 2.0, which lists out the priority sectors for investigation. Through this program, we have systematically assessed and triaged more than 1,100 sites. We have identified 51 sites in New South Wales with significant PFAS contamination. This means they remain a high priority and require continued investigation, remediation and/or monitoring. In New South Wales, the polluter pays. The EPA has no legal powers to compel Commonwealth Government to undertake remediation actions on Commonwealth land. This includes Department of Defence sites in New South Wales such as RAF Base, Williamtown, Commonwealth Government, Department of Infrastructure, Transport, Regional Development, Communication and the Arts Sites in New South Wales, these are federal airports of Sydney, Bangstown and Camden. The EPA has vigorously pursued Commonwealth Government as a polluter to take action to protect the community and PFAS contamination at RAF Base, Williamtown, other defence sites and federal airports in New South Wales. Without legal power to compel Commonwealth Government, this has created issues for the EPA in exercising our regulatory powers. The EPA advocates on behalf of the community impacted by Commonwealth activities such as RAF Base, Williamtown, to ensure they are assessed and managed, even though we do not have legal powers to do so. The EPA has also assessed New South Wales sites around Commonwealth Government sites to ensure local communities have access to accurate information. In New South Wales, we have fostered a collaborative approach to the management of PFAS across the agencies, including Health, Water Agencies and Department of Prime Industries. This has not always been our experience working with federal agencies and we would appreciate the opportunity to extend the spirit of collaboration across jurisdictions. Greater effort from the federal agencies to work with us on matters relating to PFAS contamination in New South Wales will ensure the local community receives consistent and accurate information. In New South Wales, we've established a whole-of-government team of experts to support the EPA's investigation program known as the Technical Advisory Group, or TAG. The TAG is chaired by the EPA and consists of government experts from the EPA, Officer of the Chief Scientist and Engineer, New South Wales Health, Department of Prime Industries and Regional Development, including New South Wales Fisheries, New South Wales Agriculture, Biosecurity, New South Wales Food Authority and a scientist from DECU. The TAG reviews investigation, scientific reports and sampling results to help develop tailored and general precautionary dietary advice on actions impacting communities and actions they can take to reduce their exposure. The TAG also assesses ongoing monitoring reports for specific sites such as RAF Base, Williamtown and undertakes detailed risk assessments with, used to formulate specific tailored precautionary dietary advice for food consumption as precautionary dietary advice for the community. Additionally, the New South Wales PFAS Expert Panel provides strategic informed advice to us, the EPA, to assist in developing coordinated responses on PFAS issues. Established under the Protection of the Environment Administrations Act 991, the Expert Panel is chaired by the New South Wales Office of Chief Scientist and Engineer and consists of senior officers representative of the same agencies made up of the TAG. When it comes to drinking water quality, that is a responsibility of New South Wales Health and Water Utilities under the Public Health Act 2010. I understand that New South Wales Health have asked Water Utilities to ensure they have assessed risks for drinking water from PFAS and included, this is their drinking water management system. New South Wales Health is supporting local water utilities and regional New South Wales and have, that have not tested already with initial screening tests for PFAS. The EPA supports New South Wales Health for this work. The work the EPA is involved in this PFAS space doesn't stop there. The EPA assists authorities to comply with New South Wales Government's ban and restriction on the use of long-chain PFAS-containing firefighting foam unless it is being used for fighting catastrophic fires. Thanks to the passing of the Environmental Legislation Amendment Hazardous Chemicals Act 2024, in March last year, New South Wales is aligned with the Industrial Chemicals Environmental Standards, I-CEMS. Under I-CEMS, PFAS chemicals per FOA, PFOS and PFHXS will be prohibited from being imported, manufactured, exported or used in Australia from the 1st of July 2025. The EPA is also focused on stopping PFAS from being included in everyday products and packaging like composting packaging because of the risk to waste streams. This includes guidance on how to test and report on PFAS in fibre-based food-containing packaging and how to find alternative materials. The EPA is also involved in the development and implementation of PFAS National Environmental Management Plan and other matters relating to PFAS which are considered through the heads of EPA Forum. This is just a summary of actions the New South Wales EPA is undertaking to manage existing PFAS contaminated sites, including RAF Base, Williamtown, and to prevent further contamination from occurring. The issue of PFAS contamination remains complex and the science is continuing to evolve. We appreciate that the issue of PFAS contamination greatly impacts communities that live around these sites. The long-term impact is still emerging and the assessment process is highly technical. For communities impacted by significant off-site PFAS contamination, we provide tailored precautionary dietary advice and we often undertake local surveys to understand people's use of groundwater and whether they grow their own produce. When we often follow up with individual door knocking so that we can have one-on-one conversations when providing this advice, so the resident can understand absolutely what that means for them. We're always looking for better ways to engage with impacted communities and how we can provide simple advice to minimise their exposure to PFAS. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I just get, so what was your position again, Mr Gathercole?
Yes, Director Operations.
And yours, Ms Ford?
Manager Operations.
Okay, and are you local or from Sydney?
Yes, Newcastle's part of our area, our branch.
Right.
And we've been involved with PFAS investigations since about 2016.
Okay. Now, we've heard from witnesses, quite a few witnesses already, particularly community witnesses, that the frustration in terms of dealing with the EPA, but they've, they've all said that what's needed is a, like an independent body, independent authority, somebody that, an organisation or a body that can kind of take control and so they know who is coordinating it, coordinating the response. Technically in New South Wales, that, that body is the EPA though, isn't it? You're essentially responsible for coordinating the response to PFAS contamination, is that correct?
Yes, since 2016, the EPA has led the New South Wales PFAS investigation program on behalf of the New South Wales Government and we provide a single point of truth for the community and we work with the New South Wales PFAS Expert Panel and the New South Wales Technical Advisory Group on a whole-of-government approach.
Right, but for some reason, people in the community think that that coordination kind of is lacking or they don't seem to think that there is one agency that's responsible. Do you think that's a fair comment or?
The community is at the core of what we do and we give tailored precautionary dietary advice to the community and that includes door knocking, going to residents' homes, door knocking and speaking with them and talking them through that advice to make sure that they understand that advice.
So for this, you're talking about Williamtown at this point, when you're saying door knocking and precautionary dietary advice, is that what you're referring to?
We provide that across the state where community and residents are impacted by PFAS contamination. We will engage and make sure they understand and give them letters that follow up.
With the contaminated sites, so since 2015, so the EPA has largely identified contaminated sites as firefighting operations, if you could talk me through these firefighting operations, defence, other areas where the firefighting foam has been sprayed, is that essentially how you're working out what contaminated sites are?
Yes, so in, in Australia, PFAS contamination has resulted largely from the use of PFAS firefighting foams and we have targeted defence bases, airports, industrial processes that used PFAS firefighting foams and also Fire Rescue New South Wales and RFS sites.
So what about aerial spraying of massive bushfires with firefighting foam historically? What's happened with that?
Yeah, from my understanding, the aerial spraying were not using PFAS foams.
Yes, so RFS have done testing in the foams that are used during bushfires and from my understanding, it doesn't contain PFAS, it's a different class of foam.
Is that, so that's historically as well?
I can't, I can't answer that, that would be a question for them.
Okay. And what about major incidents? I think that what I'm getting at and also biosolids that are kind of leaching into the water as well, I think what I'm getting at is, is that the Blue Mountains contamination appears to have come after both Sydney, well, Sydney Water said there was no known contamination hotspots in the catchment, but of course that came about as a result of possibly a major accident on the highway. Has the EPA looking at expanding what it deems as potential contamination sites or potential contamination sources?
Absolutely, and that's what we're here to do. Absolutely, and that's what we're here to do. So we're looking at PFAS-contaminated sites in New South Wales and we're definitely looking at that site where that crash occurred. We're investigating that as a high priority, so we're engaging with the RFS and Fire Rescue New South Wales about foam that was deployed in that area back in about 1992.
Okay, well, we did cut to it yesterday, so I'll move on from that. We're in the Hunter at the moment. So Central Coast, we just heard from witnesses this morning about, well, one of them, the guy that had from SORR that had the clean-up boom, was talking about contamination in, was it Tugger Lake?
Yeah.
Tugger Lake that in fact PFAS threw the waterways in the Central Coast and the Central Coast Council wasn't really doing anything according to him to clean up and in fact moved him along, him and his PFAS clean-up technology got it out of the water. What's the EPA doing about the contaminated water? Just one example in Central Coast waterways.
Yeah, no problem. So we targeted power stations as well because they traditionally used firefighting foams. So we've conducted major PFAS investigations on all coal-fired power stations as well and the former Lake Memora Power Station as well over there. And so as part of those investigations, the New South Wales Government obtained biota or fish species and crustacea from Lake Macquarie and Tugger Lakes. In 2017, we provided precautionary dietary advice.
So this very recent PFAS has just been discovered in Central Coast water, very recently?
Yeah, sure.
So, and it says that the council informed the EPA?
Sure.
The EPA is working on possible sources?
Sure, yes. About a week and a half ago, we were notified by the Central Coast Council of a PFAS detect in Arimba Creek. Now, what I understand is that that is a raw water supply, so it's not a drinking water supply, so the National Health and Medical Research Guidelines for Drinking Water don't apply to that raw water supply.
Can I just interrupt you, Dr, Mr Gathercole, because this inquiry is also looking at waterways? We've heard a lot about drinking water, but it would be great here to also talk about the impact of PFAS in water generally on wildlife, the environment. We don't, we haven't had much evidence on that, but I would, because that's also the EPA's responsibility, isn't it? PFAS in the waterways, not just drinking water?
Yes, and with respect, Chair, I was getting to that part. So just do you want to provide some context on Arimba Creek first, that there was a detect? We took it very seriously, engaged with Central Coast Council and had a meeting with New South Wales Health and council to try and identify some sources. So we, and so what's important, just on that last point, is at the Mardi Dam where water is provided, drinking water, it complies with the National Health and Medical Research Guidelines for Drinking Water. So Arimba Creek hasn't been used by council since last year, I think from memory, August, as to go into the water supply. So that has been isolated and is not proposed to be used. So council's undertaken a sample programme and they've detected PFAS in Arimba Creek and some of the waterways around that area and they're below the National Environmental Management Plan 2.0, 95% are ecological guidelines in those waterways, but any detect is taken seriously by the EPA and so we're looking at other sources. So we do have a licensed premises chair, the former Mangrove Mountain landfill that's in that vicinity, in that catchment, and that hasn't been operating since 2014, but we want to make sure there's no dischargeers from that. And we have been undertaking sampling in that area, around Arimba Creek and in that area many times last year and annually we've been going out with DEQU's science to undertake a suite of sampling and that's due again in February. We've just completed a five-year licence review and there's a number of samples that have been obtained the last couple of weeks. So we went out last Friday and obtained samples from that site to make sure there's been no impact on the waterways and we'll continue to do that. We're out again this week and we want to make sure, and we're not aware of any discharges from that site in the past few years, but we're still looking at that seriously. We're also working with council and other potential sources because you need to use the National Environmental Management Plan 2.0, Appendix B is a list of sectors and that includes sewage as well. So I know that at Mangrove Mountain, that operates on septic tank and so when there is rainfall, those can overflow and they can be a source of PFAS as well.
I'll go to the opposition, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a couple. You mentioned the fact that PFAS entering the environment is largely from firefighting foam, 80%, 90%? What sort of breakdown do we think of?
Well, I mean...
And sorry, I guess my follow-up question is going to be, now that that's taken out of the cycle, is obviously there less PFAS entering the environment?
PFOS.
PFOS?
Well, yeah, look, I mean, when we started looking at, just for context, we started looking at PFAS in 2016. The PFAS family included about 2,000 chemicals. Today, it's about 16,000 chemicals. So it shows how that has emerged over the years. That's just a bit of context. What we have found is that firefighting foam has been the major source of PFAS contamination in Australia and that was banned in New South Wales in 2021 except for catastrophic circumstances. But we do know products have come into Australia in everyday life that we've used for decades, you know, toothpaste shaving creams, shampoos, soaps, fry pans etcetera, Scotchgard carpets. And what happens, that goes down the drain when we're having a shower and things and that goes to a sewage treatment plant or a septic tank. Waste products, we have our muesli bar wrappers and things are put to landfill and then those landfills receive those solid wastes. So there are other sources of PFAS that can get into society. We have benefited from those products for some decades and what really needs to happen is for those to be phased out as well.
You mentioned the 51 sites that are under investigation. What's the end goal for them? Is it to just contain the contaminants on that site or is it to clean those sites so they're free of contaminant?
Yeah, good question. So we triage all of our investigations. There's 51 on our website and they're ones where there's off-site impacts on groundwater or surface water or both and have potential impact on community members, so where we've gone and engaged and door-knocked. There are other investigations we've undertaken where we've door-knocked and given residents' advice as well, but largely when it's off-site impacts, that's where those 51 are and they require ongoing investigation, remediation or monitoring.
And is that number stable? Is that number coming down because you're managing more? Is it increasing because you're finding more?
I think increasing.
And is there a reason we can't get more off that list as they become managed or?
Well, one of the frustrations of the EPA is Commonwealth sites and that in New South Wales, a polluter pays and we have no power to, no jurisdiction to make the Department of Defence or federal airport corporations do what we need them to do in terms of remedial action. So that cooperative alignment across all jurisdictions to work together to better serve the community, to provide better advice and information to the community and have those investigations undertaken quickly and in accordance with the National Environmental Management Plan would help because we are frustrated by delays in getting that remedial action undertaken and we can't compel the Commonwealth to do so.
And then I'll just finally, I presume you have a register of those catastrophic incidents where that foam has been used?
Yes, we do. And so when we talk catastrophic, we're talking about an 80-mL tank of fuel at Port Botany blowing up and potentially killing hundreds and thousands of people. That's a catastrophic event. Those PFAS fans are very good at putting out those very high-intense fires. That's an example of a catastrophic event where lives and property are severely at risk and a catastrophic circumstance is a word that the Fire Rescue New South Wales and RFS use.
Questions from the Governor, Mr Murphy?
Thank you, Chair. So just to first, to start with a point of clarification from what you were just saying. So across the PFAS family of chemicals, you say there are around 16,000 of them, this is just a growing problem, isn't it?
It certainly is.
You characterize it that way, so?
Yes, absolutely.
It's become a bigger problem over time.
It's becoming a bigger problem and, you know, from 2016, it was emerging, it still is emerging worldwide and we are learning every single day about the family of chemicals and how extensive they are throughout society.
Yeah, and is it fair to say it really isn't going to be a problem that will be reduced unless we stop the proliferation of that family of chemicals?
Absolutely, and stopping products coming into the country and stopping chemicals coming into the country would help.
All right, and just the other thing I wanted to just ask you about, you've mentioned a few times, which is the door-knocking that you say you've done around these, it's around these 51 sites. And how many door-knocks have you done in Newcastle, for example?
Yeah, good, good question. So when Williamtown, and I think back to Williamtown, and that was traumatic for the community but also for us because we do care about the community and the environment, that's why we turn up to work every day. But with Williamtown, we door-knocked 750 people on a Sunday morning and Corrie and I were both there. We got up early, we were with New South Wales Health Officers to do that and we made sure at each door that we, that people understood what that precautionary dietary advice was. Now, that precautionary dietary advice was developed by the New South Wales PFAS Expert Panel, the New South Wales Technical Advisory Group, and the EPA delivered that advice door-to-door to the residents of Williamtown to make sure that in each of the zones, because we come up with the Williamtown area map, it had three zones, so a primary zone where...
Sorry, when was that door knock?
2017, November.
Okay, and have you door-knocked since then in the same area?
So 750 then, I don't think so.
No, so it was one door knock at once?
Yeah.
So in terms of the door-knocks, is there a plan there to go back to the same areas? I mean, people move house, they move on, what's the plan to use this effective form of communication consistently so that you're going back and doing it over and over again to new people?
Yeah, absolutely, and that is the plan to double back and do that. And we work with the Polluter Defence, so they give an ongoing management plan report annually to the EPA for review and the latest, or OMP we call it, the latest ongoing monitoring report was released in July 2024 and the findings do not suggest any potential exposure risks for the community have changed since 2021 to 2023.
Sure, but you were talking about people growing vegetables in their backyard. I mean, if you've just moved in, I mean, 2017, eight years ago, when's the next door knock planned?
Yeah, we're circling around with our current plan to do that and door-knock the community.
But there'd be a lot of turnover, I mean, it might not be, it might hit the 10-year mark before you get back to door-knocking and, you know, it could be a third or half the community that's moved on. A lot of people might be growing vegetables.
Yeah, so every, every year with the release of the data that Defence has collected, they organise community information sessions which are advertised via Letterboxd drop and on the local radio from what I can recall. So there is annual advice provided by Defence and other New South Wales agencies via those community information sessions. So there are other avenues for the community to access information if they have moved into the area.
We will still double round and do the door-knocks, but that's what I was getting at. There are those drop-in sessions Defence organises and EPA attend along with other government agencies to answer questions from the community. We also have information updated on our website as does Defence to make sure the community has access to the latest information, sample results and advice. And as that information and advice changes, the EPA will revisit precautionary dietary advice and nothing we'd love more than to take that away, but we need that there to protect the community for now.
So when's the next one in Williamtown, for example?
The next...
When you said you were going to get around and revisit people, when's the next one planned, given the last one was eight years ago?
Yeah, that's part of our plan right now to do that.
Okay, so you haven't planned it yet?
No, we have, we've got a two-year plan and we're circling back to all affected impacted communities to do...
What, every two years?
No, to do the door knock within the next two years, yes.
Within the next two years?
Yes, well, that's within our plan, so we will be doing those door-knocks to revisit those community members.
So it's a decade, you think that's an appropriate timeframe? It'll be 10 years by then, won't it?
Well, there have been those other ways of communicating, but yes, we do need to get back as quick as we can.
Thanks very much for coming along today to provide evidence. Could I just ask a question too about the New South Wales Fire and Rescue contamination issue and specifically the contaminated sites? And the, I guess, engagement between the EPA and New South Wales Fire and Rescue? And if it's not within your remit, please explain, if you don't mind, who we could speak to, but in terms of the identification of the sites that hitherto have taken place and we understand the sites that tend to be most impacted are those where training was done, did these training of fire and rescue employees and then there's the standalone stations. In terms of ensuring that the work is being done to do the remediation or whatever is required with respect to those fire and rescue sites, is that something that the EPA has responsibility for?
So the Fire and Rescue New South Wales has a PFAS triage programme. They refer investigations to the EPA, so they undertake investigations, past use of PFAS firefighting foams, the training, sometimes it's occurred at the back of stations etcetera?
Yes.
Or on the local sports ground. Similarly with RFS, they've got their own PFAS triage programme and they refer investigation sites to the EPA for oversight, both of them for oversight.
So in terms of, if I could put it in these terms, finding out about how well and how effective and how competently the work is being done by New South Wales Fire and Rescue and the RFS with respect to, and I'll call it their PFS, PFOS, PFOS problem, I sort of use the term arguably, EPA is the one that retains that body of information about where everything is up to?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yep, so the EPA has oversight to that, works very closely with them and encourages the highest priority investigations are undertaken first, of course, where communities are impacted. Example was Fire Rescue New South Wales in Mullamimbi last year, there was an engagement of 30 residents and door-knocks by the EPA, an extensive merger on that to let everybody know and understand at people's door what the impacts were on them from the past use of firefighting foams.
And if I could just follow that up, because when we heard from New South Wales Fire and Rescue and evidence provided to the committee, I certainly had a sense that it's an issue that covers a number of sites and the task of working through, doing the required work, given the availability of, or the current availability of the expertise required to do what needs to be done on a site, any given site, means that this could be a very long-term project. I'm just wondering if you could care to comment on that? I mean, they didn't put a specific period of time, but I've got the impression that this is, or could potentially be, a relatively modestly unfolding exercise which could take some time.
Yeah, absolutely.
So would you care to comment on that?
Absolutely, these PFAS investigations take a number of years, they're not a quick thing. So it starts generally with a preliminary site investigation, which is like a desktop review and then it moves into a detailed site investigation. Now, these take a number of years because a number of samples have to be obtained, groundwater, surface water samples, historic use etcetera, and then reports are prepared by consultants and submitted to the EPA, which we then have oversight and review of those and provide comment. We go to the New South Wales Technical Advisory Group who provide comment on those reports as well, give feedback to the polluter in this stage, you know, the Fire and Rescue New South Wales or RFS with our advice on that. South Wales or RFS, with, with our advice on that.
In terms of, sorry, I should hear from the chair, in terms of a, a, a follow-up to ensure the work, or the recommendations, if there are recommendations that come back to RFS or New South Wales Fire and Rescue, does the EPA have an active engagement to follow up to ensure this work's being done?
Yes, we do. Like, we meet with them monthly and make sure that Fire and Rescue, New South Wales and separately, RFS are doing as much as they can to help us with our PFAS investigation program and that their triage programs go of tailing for our oversight. We, we, you know, say to them, what are your highest priority and next priorities to be looked at that may impact on the community or the environment?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we've got it. Mrs. Aileen McDonald.
Thank you. I, I probably misunderstood, but when you said before about with some sort of federal or defence, that you have no, is it no oversight?
No jurisdiction.
No jurisdiction. So does that mean, I assume that you would have a database of affected PFAS sites. Are they included in, in that registry or database?
So you're talking about the 51 sites that we have on our website? Where there's off-site impacts, and they're the highest priority sites that we have listed on our website. We have investigated about 1,100 overall. So where, where there's been PFAS detected or remediated. So sometimes if you find PFAS in soils, you can sometimes dig that out and take it to a landfill. You can use water treatment plants to, and activated carbon to treat groundwater, et cetera, as what they've done at Williamtown. Like, they've got three giant water treatment plants the size of football fields that they treat groundwater through with activated carbon. So there are some remedial actions that can be employed. And we also make note on any licence premises that we have, if PFAS is detected and there is an investigation and what were the findings, whether that was remediated or whether that is contained on site.
And so, excuse me, that information's available publicly, you said, like on, it's on your website?
We only have the 51 sites listed that have off-site impacts.
Yep.
Which are the highest priorities.
And what do, what barriers does the EPA face in holding, say, industries and defence accountable for PFAS?
Yeah, well, starting with the Commonwealth, as I said earlier, that because we don't, because the polluter pays in New South Wales, and that's really important. And we can't compel Defence to take remedial action. They have cooperated somewhat though with some of their defence bases, but it does take a long time. And it is of frustration to the EPA on, on how time moves over that period. Whereas with industry, the EPA has jurisdiction in New South Wales to compel industry to do what we want them to do with PFAS investigations. And they usually work with us a bit more expediently to get their PFAS investigations and/or any remediation undertaken.
So if you could do something to remove those barriers, what would it be?
Well, I mean, if, if the Commonwealth are bothered by New South Wales laws, or we could get powers to compel Defence and the federal government to do what we needed them to do in a timely manner, to ensure that communities are protected, because that's what the EPA is all about. The community is at the centre of what we do every day.
Can I ask what the response was from the EPA when you saw the results of that research into platypus that the UNSW released last year? This was the eight or nine dead platypus, huge, huge levels of PFOS in their blood, but particularly the worst affected was found in the Hunter River in Morpeth. That concentration was 1,200 micrograms per kilo. There was another one in Urimba Creek on the Central Coast, that was 740. What, what was the EPA's response to that? For example, have you tried to find the reasons why, for example, a platypus in the Hunter River at Morpeth has such high levels of PFOS in its blood?
Absolutely. We were certainly alarmed with those findings. You know, a platypus is a native animal, and we're here to protect the community and the environment. With Morpeth, there's Hunter Water Sewage Treatment Plant in that vicinity. And we've been working with Hunter Water about that, and about the licence that they hold with the EPA, and looking into those discharges from that water treatment plant, and how they manage PFAS, for instance. In terms of Arimba Creek, we've ramped up our sampling of Arimba Creek, and we've been out there many times last year, EPA, to undertake sampling, hand in hand with council, Central Coast Council. We take them out every time when we invite them to come out with us to work with us on possible sources that may impact on those fatalities.
Can I just check, so with the Hunter Water Sewage Treatment Plant and the Hunter River, did you check, have you checked upstream from the Hunter Water Sewage Treatment Plant? So much so to ascertain that it's that sewage treatment plant that's discharging high levels of PFAS wastewater into the river?
We've looked at that catchment area generally with Hunter Water.
Because there's PFAS in mining activities as well, isn't there?
Yeah, well, there can be, Chair, yes. Depending, and, and sometimes it's as a result of fires or firefighting training.
Suppressing dust as well, is that, do they do it with that?
Potentially, yes.
So, sorry, so, and so the question did, has the EPA tested after that research was released into the deaths of platypus? Have you tested, for example, that area? Or do you already know that the Hunter Sewage Treatment Plant is discharging high levels of PFAS into the river?
Probably defer to my colleague. Have, have we been looking with Hunter?
Yes, Hunter Water do testing at all of their STPs fairly regularly. So the EPA does have access to that information, but I don't have that in front of me. I can't give you any definitive answer at this point.
So we, we've made some investigations with Hunter Water. I'm not sure if we've tested upstream from that water treatment plant, Chair.
And just in the couple of minutes just remaining, could you explain to the committee what actions you have asked Hunter Water to take to discharge less contaminated water into the river, given the impacts clearly not just on platypus? Platypus is almost, you know, an indicator species in this situation. It's got to be impacting kind of everything. What actions so far has Hunter Water been asked to take, or are you still investigating?
Yeah, look, I think we're still investigating, but what I understand, the best gains can be made upstream of the sewage treatment plant. So where you have trade waste agreements with Hunter Water, people who are putting into that sewer, there's limits imposed by Hunter Water for that licence to go into their sewer. And that's where you'll get the gain to reduce PFAS.
Because, but the Hunter Water is also releasing its, its, its water.
It's, it's more difficult at the back end to treat PFAS. It's easier to treat at the front end. If you can put the right limits on PFAS, what's being imported into the sewer.
So Hunter Water are going through a process of looking through all of their operations and trying to assess where PFAS treatment may be required in their network.
Because there's no regulations, finally, just to, there's no regulations at this point in terms of load limits, is there? I'm just thinking in terms of recommendations for this committee. At this point, in terms of EPLs, there's no load limits at all in terms of PFAS chemicals that are discharged into waterways from industry, from water treatment plants. It's because it's in some ways such an emerging issue.
Correct.
Is that correct? Yeah.
Just, sorry, just very quickly, how close are we to finding a source of the contamination in Wari Alder Water Source?
Sorry, can you just repeat?
How close are we to finding the, the origin of the PFAS in the Wari Alder Water, drinking water?
Wari Alder. I would have to take that on notice. I don't have any information on that, sorry.
If you take that on notice.
Okay, that's the end of our time. Thank you very much for appearing and the work you're doing in this very complicated space. We appreciate it. The secretary will be in touch with you if you've agreed to take anything on notice or if we've got any supplementary questions for you both.
Pleasure. Thanks, Chair.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
That's the end of our session today. Thank you.